Good evening, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Orange Planning Board for Wednesday, December 18th. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosna?
Mr. Rosner?
Mr. Rosner?
Here.
Mr. Hutt?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
President Torpe? Reverend Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
And Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
Thank you. This is pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231 PL 1975. This is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the Bolton Board of Village Hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2013 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record and the Star Ledger in December 2012, and by filing said notice in the office of the village clerk. Our first bit of business is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on October 29th, 2013. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Jettie, for writing those. We also have a resolution establishing the meeting dates for the year 2014. Do I hear a motion for that?
So moved.
Second? Good. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any problems? Michael, do you see anything?
Well, there's only one date that I won't be able to make it, but it doesn't make a difference.
Then we're redoing the entire. Okay. But nothing usually alerts us to anything that might conflict with the Jewish calendar, but I guess we didn't.
No, I didn't see anything on the...
I didn't either.
Thank you, Dan. Okay.
In my rabbinical capacity.
Good. That's in your unofficial capacity.
Unofficial.
That's right. Then we have the approval of resolution. This is Case 232, Harold and Noemi Colton, Max, Block 1302, Lot 34, 228 Highland Street, Highland Road. This is a minor site plan and soil disturbance. The applicant is seeking to construct a retaining wall and fence. Do I hear a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. Shall we do a roll call, please, Jettie?
Okay. Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosna?
Yes.
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
And Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all that we... That's all that could vote, right? Okay. Before we hear the next application, which is basically Case 231, Jettie is not here tonight, right? That's still at the Historic Preservation. Okay. So we will hear in a minute Case 226, which is Seton Hall University, the University Center. Prior to that, though, Village President Torpe is going to explain. Talk to us a little bit about something that I know that he's approached each of you on, which is the reappointment process. And maybe if you could take a couple of minutes out, because that would help everybody understand where we are at in it, what's...
Sure. So I've been asked to just describe the process. All the different statutory committees, boards, and even beyond that, all of our professional services, everything like that, myself, my administration, and the trustees also all agree that for any of the appointments that we have to make, most of them which are coming at the end of the calendar year, that we're going to do a little bit more of a kind of thorough look at all the different appointments so that people who are up for reappointment will be interviewed just like they were kind of applying for the first time, I guess. Obviously, with due consideration to their experience and due consideration to their service on the boards, that certainly doesn't, you know, automatically make someone qualified to be reappointed for another term. So the idea being that we want to make sure the process is fair and open so that if there are people in the community who haven't had a chance to serve, that they do have that opportunity. Obviously, the appointments on all of these boards and committees is not just kind of an appointment for life, but, you know, is an opportunity to serve this community, and we should make sure that, you know, anybody who does live in town and who does want to participate in that process does have the opportunity to do so. So there are a couple openings on the planning board and Board of Adjustment, for example, and, you know, we're soliciting applications from the community at large, and hopefully it'll be Trustee Rosner and I that will be interviewing folks for that. And so for both the positions that are my appointment as Village President and also the positions that are the board's appointment as a whole, the Board of Trustees. And so hopefully, we'll get a chance to talk to people that have already been serving, get a chance to talk to people that may have never served before but are interested in doing so, and then we'll be able to move forward with making the appointments as soon as possible, probably do it very beginning of January.
And I haven't announced publicly to the board, but Allison Brown officially resigned in the late fall, and can you comment on what the process is for getting a new full member on the board?
The same as I just described.
And by beginning of January?
That's what we're hoping, yeah. Yeah, so we're going to try and schedule all the interviews. I mean, obviously, it's tough with the end of the year with the holidays, and everybody's different schedules, but we're hoping that by the beginning of January, you know, we'll be able to have people ready just then, and if not, you know, there might be one meeting where all the current appointments are held over, and then it'll be in a full count after that.
I think we have our next meeting January...
Seven...
Six.
Six.
Yeah, so we're aiming to finish it all before that.
Do we have anything we're hearing, do you know, officially? Besides anything we carry over?
Yeah, nothing else.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, Seton Hall. This is Case Number 226, Seton Hall University, University Center. This is continuation from July 16th, 2013, Block 1901, Lot 3, 400 South Orange Avenue. This is preliminary and final site plan. The applicant seeks to construct a new university center. Good evening, Council. How are you?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Kevin Cokely, Law Firm of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. Just to kind of cover some old grounds, we were initially here talking about this application in April of this year when the board approved a master plan showing the location of this structure. The master plan that was approved did not include the service road, which has been an issue in the application. Then we were here in May, May 6th, at which time Mr. Garbini testified about the university's general intent with respect to the building, and Mr. Di Giacento, the site engineer, gave extensive testimony about site engineering issues, and Mr. Signarello also supplemented the testimony of Mr. Garbini. Then we were here in July, I think it was a short evening, you had two applications. At that time, Mr. Signarello completed his testimony, and Michael Shatkin, the architect for the project, then testified, and he was on the stand for quite a while and went through a lot of the architectural issues and some of the landscaping issues. So that was where we left off six months ago, almost, five months ago. So in July, we had submitted a whole raft of additional information, but I think the, you know, as critical to tonight's meeting, there were four reports that were submitted. One was a report with respect to truck traffic on South Orange Avenue, and there is a comparison made to the amount of traffic that will be on the service road. There was a noise report discussing the amount of noise that will emanate from the project. There was a revised site plan that basically concentrated on the revisions to the service road, and there was a landscaping plan submitted. And there were other plans submitted, but I'm really just concentrating on what we think is critical to, for your hearing, the balance of the application. Of note, there was also a report or a letter submitted where the fire and police chiefs endorsed the service road relocation as presented to you. So tonight, we hope to move the application forward. We'll start with Mr. Lothian, who's a traffic engineer, will testify concerning his efforts in looking at the level of truck traffic on South Orange Avenue, comparing it to the university service road truck traffic. Mr. Horesco, who's a sound expert, will give testimony regarding ambient noise and also the noise from the project. Mr. Di Giacento will be back showing the revised plan of the site, revised site plan of the service road, because as, you know, the university took note of comments from yourselves and the public and has relocated the service road to some extent. And Mr. Scherzer, the landscape architect, will be here to talk about landscaping issues. And then finally, Mr. Woodruff will be here to talk about the two variances, which I'd just like to remind you of. There's one variance for five feet additional height at one aspect of the university center, and then there's a variance for the distance between buildings which is exceeded in one location. So there's less distance than the ordinance calls for. So those are the two C variances that are before the board. So with that brief summary, if I might proceed, I'll call Mr. Lothian.
Okay, thank you.
Should he stay at that microphone? Is that the way it works best?
He should stay at the microphone. What are we doing here, Jettie? Is there a second microphone down there?
There's one offstage.
I think... Can you share this one up there? I think it's better if he's a little closer to it.
There's one on upstairs.
Yeah. Just bring that around. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lothian, what is your profession?
I'm a licensed professional engineer with Langen Engineering and Environmental Services. I've been in the engineering profession for 44 years now.
I guess he can give us his credentials.
All right, and what is the specialty of your engineering practice?
Traffic and transportation. I have a master's in traffic and transportation from New Jersey Institute of Technology.
You can make... While you adjust the microphone, we're going to swear you in first so that your credentials are... Might bring it up a little bit.
Bring them in. Grab, he can take her right off the stand.
And he can take it right off the stand, but he's good.
Thank you.
Good. So we're going to swear you in first so that you...
First, spell your last name for me, please.
Lothian, L-O-T-H-I-A-N. First name, William.
Do you swear affirm?
I swear in affirm.
Okay. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lothian, we just went back on the record again. Could you just repeat your prior testimony to the board?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and other states. I'm a senior consultant with Langen Engineering and Environmental Services. I've been with Langen for 41 years, and I have a master's in traffic and transportation from New Jersey Institute of Technology. My bachelor's was at MCE, and I'm a fellow in the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
All right, and have you been qualified by numerous boards to give testimony?
Yes.
As a traffic engineer?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to offer him as a traffic...
I'm sorry, did you say 41 years?
Forty-one years with Langen.
Okay, that's enough.
Today, actually, 41 years today.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Fantastic.
By exception rather than rule today.
True.
All right, did the university ask you to take a look at the level of truck traffic on South Orange Avenue?
Yes, he did.
And what did you do on that assignment?
Well, in response to questions raised by the... At a previous meeting, Langen performed the traffic assessment. It was dated June 20th of this year, and it was to identify the number of large trucks and heavy vehicles traveling on South Orange Avenue in front of the campus, and then compared that with the number of trucks and tractor-trailers that would be utilizing this proposed new service road to access the new student center. We counted on typical days, so one was Monday, May 20th, and Thursday, May 30th, to identify existing truck traffic traveling on South Orange Avenue in both directions during both peak hours and throughout the remainder of the day. We got a good handle on the volume of trucks. We counted a total of 23 tractor-trailers on South Orange Avenue during the nine hours studied with a maximum of five in a single hour period. We also counted an additional 296 heavy trucks and buses in both directions during that same nine-hour count period. So not all of the heavies, big trucks, were tractor-trailers. The university anticipates only about seven to 15 total deliveries a day, with only three to four of those being tractor-trailers, while three may be smaller vans, and the remainder being box trucks. This is no change from the number of trucks that are servicing the campus today. The proposed truck route will separate the truck traffic from the student and pedestrian and automobile traffic that's currently on campus. The truck deliveries will be removed from the main pedestrian routes throughout the campus and redirect them to a service drive that's parallel to South Orange Avenue, approximately 150 feet from the nearest residential dwelling. That proposed service drive will minimize the pedestrian and truck conflicts on campus and also provide an emergency service route to Cabrini Hall, Fay Hall, Carolyn Schwartz College of Nursing Building, and the Arts and Science Hall. The number of trucks that will travel on this proposed new campus service road will be negligible when compared with the significant number of heavy vehicles already traveling in both directions along South Orange Avenue. Also, the existing truck traffic is much closer... The existing truck traffic is much closer to residential homes across South Orange Avenue from the campus, and the existing truck traffic that's on South Orange Avenue is stopping and starting due to the existing traffic signals at the main campus driveway opposite Center Street and also at the Signal Award Place.
Okay. I guess first of all, let me ask you one question. When will the university's trucks come and go? Do they have a time period?
They're typically during the hours that the campus is open and operating, so they'd be during the daytime hours as opposed to anything that would conflict with the residential.
All right. And you've been advised by the university of that fact?
Yes.
Is that true? Okay. Now, where did you do your traffic counts?
We did the counts right along South Orange Avenue, just at Center Street, so we caught all the trucks that would be going across this area where the proposed service road would be.
Okay. And do trucks regularly stop at the light at Center Street?
When they're on South Orange Avenue, typically they do. If they get caught by the light, otherwise they're just traveling through the light. So it's a combination of both. But the volume of trucks that is going into and using the university is the same volume of trucks that would be entering the Center Street driveway today. They're still going to enter the Center Street driveway, they'll just have a different route on campus separated from the pedestrian and student traffic and the automobile traffic.
All right. So the main point of your testimony is that it'll be a negligible amount of truck traffic?
Negligible amount and also safer due to separating it from the pedestrian activity and students.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions, sir, this witness? Do you anticipate that sanitation will occur at night or during the day? Pickups, sanitation pickups?
It'll probably be no different than it is today.
And today it is, do you know?
I'd have to ask the university when they...
We will.
I don't have that data.
Are there any questions for this witness from the public? Please come up, state your name and your address, and if you can remember, please make your testimony... I mean, your presentation a question. You could actually use that microphone down there, I think that might... Okay, either one. Either.
Uli Kremer.
Maybe not.
Five AM call.
You can't see him?
Yes.
I guess we want to see you, so please come up, sorry. We'll get used to this. This way you got our microphone tested, so that's good.
Hi there, Uli Kremer, five AM call. You said day, it's a limited follow-up question. The traffic deliveries or the deliveries are doing daytime hours, what is that exactly?
Could you just tell us again your name and your address?
Yeah, we didn't quite get it.
I couldn't quite hear it.
Uli Kremer, five AM call, South Orange.
Thank you kindly.
Spell it for me, sir.
Beautiful name, spell it for us.
Oh. U-L-I, first name Kremer, K-R-E-M-E-R.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Typically, from seven in the morning till probably around six in the evening.
Is it correct that, for instance, we cannot mow the lawn before eight o'clock in the morning?
Is it... Do your question is that you cannot mow your lawn?
Yeah. Can I mow the lawn before eight o'clock in the morning?
I have no idea.
I don't know.
So I'm not here. Unfortunately, our zoning officer's not here, and we don't know.
And a question with respect to the trucks?
Do you know the answer to that question?
No. I assume it's eight o'clock, that's at least my understanding.
I doubt it's eight o'clock, but I've heard law lawyers a lot early in the night.
Well, the trucks are not coming in any different than they are today, so whenever they're coming in today, they wouldn't be changing their schedule.
That actually is not my question.
Okay.
Then will the trucks back up?
No, we've provided an area for the trucks to turn around as opposed to backing up. Spin around, turn around area.
They will not back up?
Well, they have to back up into the building, but then they're added away in between grading and landscaping.
So when they back up, will this beeping sound go off?
I think most trucks that do back up have that beeping sound.
There is another expert who will testify concerning this issue.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joseph Horesco.
Did we swear him in before?
No.
Let's do it again. Okay, shall we?
Sir, could you spell your name for me, please?
Horesco, H-O-R-E-S-C-O.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give here will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear, yes.
All right. Mr. Horesco, what is your profession?
I'm an acoustical consultant or a sound expert, as some refer to it.
Okay. And what exactly is your training for that profession?
I have an engineering degree, mechanical engineering degree, but with a concentration on acoustics from the University of Hartford. It's a four-year degree, and I've since been Institute of Noise Control Engineers Board certified.
All right. And what exactly do you do in your profession? Can you give the board some general ideas?
Sure. Exactly like what I've done on this project, but it's measuring sound, calculating sound from one place, one location, to another location, reducing the sound through some kind of recommendations, and again, calculating it, measuring it, interior, exterior, just about any kind of project you can think of.
All right. And have you been approved as an expert by any boards or authorities to give testimony?
Yes.
By approximately how many?
More than a dozen. I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to offer Mr. Horesco as an expert in noise and sound.
I'm tempted to ask him if he's been at his current firm for 41 years, but I won't because unless he started when he was zero, yes, he's accepted things.
Thank you. If it helps, I'm 15 years.
All right. Mr. Horesco, what was your assignment with respect to this matter?
So I was asked to assess the sound from the trucks on the new service drive and the impact, the acoustic impact in the neighborhood.
All right, and how did you go about doing that?
We did several things. We measured the existing sound levels at the site. We took some measurements of some truck alarms, and we also applied the sound levels from standard truck sounds that the Federal Highway Administration uses for their assessments, and we plotted that on the service drive and calculated the sound levels at the nearest residences.
All right, so what would be the significance of the nearest residence? What is that called?
The reason why is the sound attenuates. It gets lower as it gets further away, so we looked at the closest ones. Any residents further from the closest would therefore be quieter.
All right. And did you compare the levels of sound that will be produced with any regulations?
Right, so we assessed it. New Jersey has the state noise regulation, NJDEP 729 for noise, and also South Orange has a regulation. They have the same overall A-weighted sound level limit, but New Jersey regulation also has octave band limits, so we applied both of those, but again, they have the same overall limit, so we generally refer to it as just the state regulation.
All right. All right, and before I get into why you reached a conclusion, did you reach a conclusion about the level of sound that's likely to be produced, you know, by activity on the service road?
Yes, we did.
All right, what was that conclusion?
We concluded that the sounds would be lower than the highest ambience, and this is the maximum sound from any of the heaviest trucks would be lower than the ambient, the highest ambient sounds. It's also below all the state regulations and in some cases below some of the ambient sounds.
All right. Just explain to the board what you mean by the term ambient.
Ambient is just whatever is not associated with the sound we're talking about, so it's the residual sound level in the community. The sound from cars on the roads, airplanes, trains, mechanical equipment, if there's any nearby, it's everything, all encompassing, other than what it is that you're looking at.
And your measurement of the sound against the state and local standards, was that at the receiving property line?
Yes, at the receiving property line.
All right, and just explain that again. What is the receiving property line?
It's... So if there are residents on South Orange Avenue, it's at the front of their property. It's the closest spot towards the university, but it's not at the university property line, so it's across South Orange Avenue.
And did you make your determinations under the assumption that the service vehicles using the service road would arrive during daytime hours?
That's correct.
All right. That you were advised of that by the university?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And just maybe to give a short summary, what is the sort of the scientific inclusion as to the level of sounds that will be produced?
The summary is that there's very little impact. I can't say no impact, but negligible impact. The fact is that we're talking about a very short duration of these maximum sound levels from the truck because it's moving, and we're talking about ambient sound levels on South Orange Avenue that in general are exceeding that, so the average sound level from the trucks is much lower than the ambient sound levels most of the time.
All right. And did you also take a look at the issue of a truck backing up?
I did. I looked at the backup alarm specifically.
And how did you do that?
We actually measured a truck staged at approximately where we believe the turnaround will be, based on the drawings that we had available. And for this one, we actually had the sound, the alarm facing South Orange Avenue, so it would be actually reversed of what would really be occurring. So we got, in my opinion, a very conservative number.
And what exactly is that number? Explain it a little bit more.
Again, it's below the state regulations, it's below the maximum, it's below the louder ambient sounds. It's similar to the maximum levels of the truck actually driving. It's just a more tonal sound, and there's only one frequency that contributes from that.
Okay. And what about the issue of trucks shifting gear? Did you take that into consideration?
Yeah. The way that the calculations are based is not the actual shift of the gear, but the highest gear, the maximum speed that we're looking at. And so I don't have any data on an actual truck shifting the gear, but I do just have the data on the truck moving, and that's what we've used.
And what speed do you anticipate the trucks will be moving?
We looked at 15 miles an hour.
And you think that's appropriate for this service road?
From everything I've heard, that's the right number.
Uh-huh. Okay. All right, and do you know whether you can cut your grass at eight in the morning?
I believe you can cut it earlier, but I have to check the noise regulation.
So, okay. All right, I have no further questions. Thank you. Board? Eli?
It's my understanding that the state regulations also talk about the noise levels at the property line from which the noises are being generated, is that true?
That's not true.
Only at the receiving property line?
That's correct.
Okay. Also, the state regulations do deal also with mechanical noise, right? Mechanical equipment?
That's correct.
Did you look at that for this building?
I have not looked at the mechanical... That was not part of my job for this project.
Do you have any idea whether the mechanical equipment on this building is going to be generating noise that will be audible outside the building?
I'm actually unaware of the building plans.
I have no further questions. Thank you. Board? Eli?
It's my understanding that the state regulations also talk about the noise levels at the property line from which the noises are being generated. Is that true?
That's not true.
Only at the receiving property line?
That's correct.
Okay. Also, the state regulations do deal also with mechanical noise, right? Mechanical equipment?
That's correct.
Did you look at that for this building?
I have not looked at the mechanical. That was not part of my job for this project.
Do you have any idea whether the mechanical equipment on this building is going to be generating noise that will be audible outside the building?
I'm actually unaware of the building plans.
All right, thank you.
Good question. Michael?
Just for my benefit and for the benefit of the public, you're talking about not exceeding state limits or South Orange limits. Can you tell me what those limits are and what your measurements were?
65 A-weighted decibels is the overall limit, and then there are octave band limits that are included on the state regulation that are separate from that 65 A-weighted limit.
And what were your measurements in terms of the nearness to 65 or?
Well, they were, at the worst case, below that. The maximum level, I believe, was 63, and I have to turn to my figures. I believe 63 was the highest that I had shown.
And is that 63 based on the backup alarm systems on the trucks, or is that a different measurement?
That's a different measurement, and that was 60 for that one. The 63, again, it's the maximum level. The instant that that truck is the closest to that resident, and it includes, you know, it's at that speed, that 15 miles per hour speed. So it's that one instant where it's the closest that it can be.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anyone from the public have questions for this witness? Come forward, please. State your name, your address, and prepare your question. You're welcome.
John Gay, 10 Elm Court.
Do that one more time.
John Gay, G-A-Y, 10 Elm Court. Your conclusions are based on comparison to the ambient noise on South Orange Avenue? Is that correct?
Well, so in other words, let me rephrase. So if we were in a spot that was quieter, so to speak, in South Orange Avenue, would your conclusions be any different?
Our measurements, also, we did two locations, one on Elm and one on Warren. And the conclusions there are, again, it's still quieter than, lower than the state regulation, further lower than the state regulation because they're further away from South Orange.
The, you said they don't exceed the state level, but you would agree that there is additional noise that's going to be generated by these trucks being compared to where they would be now. Like, for example, the trucks now take an interior route in Seton Hall.
Right.
Is that correct? So from South Orange Avenue, the truck traffic now, the amount of noise that's generated is going to be lower than the amount of truck traffic noise generated by this new service road.
The trucks that are on the campus now are further than the trucks on the new service drive.
Yeah.
And therefore, they would be quieter than the new trucks on the service drive. What my analysis was, also comparing it to what the existing ambient is, which is heavy traffic on South Orange Avenue.
I understand.
So the impact compared to that is very small.
Okay. But again, I guess that goes back to, so basically what you're saying is since South Orange Avenue is so noisy, this is really no big deal.
Well, it's also below the code. It's also a short, and it's also, I understand, the trucks are now moving further from another set of residents. So in some ways, we've quieted it down from that location, and so I think it's fair to look at it in all those directions.
The, as far as the amount of noise that's going to, I'm just mostly going to talk about the backing up of the trucks now.
Sure.
If I'm standing, 10 Elm Court is directly, I don't know if it was, I don't think it was one of the sites, or maybe it was one of the sites that you talked about, directly across from where this loading dock area is where the trucks are going to be backing up. Am I going to be able to hear the trucks backing up from my house, do you believe?
I can't say you will never hear it. I do think that there will be occasions where it's potentially audible.
Okay. You mean talking about the beep, the backup beep?
Yes, it's potentially audible.
Okay. But is there going to be any time you think that I'm not going to hear it? You're saying that it's possible that I'm not going to hear the beep?
Oh, sure. When I measured on South Orange Avenue, on South Orange Avenue, we could not measure it during the traffic flow. We had to wait for those 15 seconds every two minutes where the traffic lowered down enough that I could actually measure how loud the backup alarm was.
So you're saying that I'm not going to be able to hear from my house?
I didn't say you won't ever be able to hear. I'm just saying that there are periods where it might be audible, but for the majority of the time, I don't believe it would be audible.
What about the trucks themselves? I saw from the chart, it seems like they were pretty close, the tractor trailers were pretty close to the meeting, the decibel limit for the state. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So when they're driving now considerably closer to South Orange Avenue, that's going to produce more noise, is that correct?
But not compared to the traffic on South Orange Avenue, which is, as told before, was in the hundreds. So we're talking about four tractor trailers, or four large delivery vehicles, for the entire day compared to hundreds.
I understand. But the moment they're driving by, I understand the average may not be a big deal, but the moment they're driving by, it's going to create more noise, is that correct?
It will not create more than a truck on the road.
So I understand, but it's going to...
Where's your more, what am I comparing to?
Well, it's going to create more than if there's not a truck driving on that service road.
Well, sure.
And it's going to create it at a level that is just directly below the state...
That's correct. That's correct. And that level is also significantly lower than the ambient traffic. And the ambient traffic is significantly higher than the state regulation.
I understand. I understand that part.
Okay.
My question is that it's going to create noise that's going to be at a level that's just right on the edge of being...
That is what I'm showing.
What are the noise level standards? What are they created for? Are they created for a connection with, you know, granting of variance, or is this something like a public safety, health type of a thing? What are the limits designed to be?
The limits are, actually, believe it or not, you may not think of it this way, but they're also, they're for public protection, and they're for protection of the commercial and industrial properties. So that they, we have a balance there where some sound is going to be considered acceptable for the public, and there's going to be some... How much sound that facility can make.
But above that, it's considered by the state to be some sort of a public hazard, health hazard, or that's what I'm trying to figure out.
There's not, it's, New Jersey has a statewide regulation. Above that, there could be a citation for exceeding that level.
I think the question was, that level, what does that indicate? Is that a harmful level? Is it a nuisance level?
It's more based, okay, it's based on nuisance.
That's what I was trying to...
I'm sorry. It's based on nuisance. It's definitely not based on harm. OSHA sets harmful regulations for workplace, and they don't even start until 85 dBA, and that's for an eight-hour period. So we're definitely below anything considered harm, but in terms of nuisance, that's where they're set.
How far back is your property from South Orange Avenue?
It's right, it's the next house in. It's right, South Orange Avenue, and I'm one house in from there.
So for this person, is there any way you could describe the, what happens to sound over a certain amount of distance? I mean, in other words, if in 50 feet or 25 feet, that reading you took, do you have any sense of what happens to it?
What happens for sound in an outdoor environment is that it attenuates by six decibels for every doubling of the distance.
So in layman's terms, what does that mean?
So in layman's terms, if I measured...
25 feet.
At 25 feet, if I measured 80 decibels at 25 feet, at 50 feet, I would measure 74 decibels. And then at 100 feet, I would measure 68 decibels.
So in a sense, there's a fairly significant drop off in sound over a certain amount of linear feet?
Over distance.
Over distance.
Yeah. There, of course, the further out you get, the less that distance, you know, the less the drop off per foot.
That's good.
It's logarithmic.
No, I'm almost done, I'm sorry.
No problem, keep going.
If there were some sort of a barrier put up between the service road and South Orange Avenue, how would that impact the noise from the trucks on the service road? Would that reduce it, or?
If it were between the trucks and the receiving on the South Orange Avenue, right?
Correct.
It would be, depending on the height and the length of it, it could reduce the...
How high, just how high would it have to be, do you think, to reduce the noise level generated from the trucks?
The...
Particularly the backing up?
In order to get five decibel reduction, you need to block line of sight from the truck sound sources to the receiving location. And then for every increase in that barrier height over that, you get additional attenuation up to approximately 10 dBA.
So if there was some sort of a barrier put up along the service road of some sort, maybe perhaps a dirt berm or something like that, would that reduce the, in your opinion, the sound that would be generated from this?
Yes.
Okay. Nothing else? Thank you.
Anybody else? Please come forward.
Willie Kriemer, 5 Elm Court. Do I understand right that there are trash compactors also in this turning circle?
I'm not quite certain where the trash compactor activities are.
We can get either the architect or the engineer up for that.
So I'm wondering...
Eventually. But what's, continue with the question.
My understanding was there is some trash processing going on in front of the building, and I wonder what the noise impact of that activity is.
When we get to the right, if we need to, we'll get a different witness, and then we'll bring this witness back to answer that question.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that all? Somebody else? No. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Mr. DiGiochinto. You were previously sworn. Do you want to swear again?
I swear.
Was previously sworn.
It's been six months.
Include your name, sir?
John DiGiochinto.
And spell the last name? Mr. DiGiochinto, do you swear the testimony you're about to give here will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
But I don't think you have to qualify him, if he's been qualified previously.
Just for my benefit, what profession?
Civil engineer.
Thank you.
All right. You testified previously in this matter, Mr. DiGiochinto?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And since your previous testimony, have you gone back and made any revisions to the plans for the service road?
Yes, we have.
All right. And could you describe those for the board?
Certainly.
Have we received this drawing? Has the board received this drawing? Yes. These plans were submitted to the board on July 3rd. And what drawing will we be looking at? Should we submit this as an exhibit? I think we should.
This is drawing CS 102, entitled Site Plan Service Road, last revised on July 2nd, 2013.
Is that exhibit the exact drawing that was submitted to the board, or have you marked it up?
That is the exact drawing.
Okay.
Would you want to mark it as an exhibit?
Uh, sure. Should we add this as an exhibit?
It's new, right?
Well, it's part of the application. It's submitted to the board previously. Normally, you know, mark.
Proceed. All right. Would you explain to the board how the service road was modified since the hearing in May?
Yes. At the hearing, you know, at the earlier hearings, there was some discussion about the service road. One of the first things that we did when we started looking at trying to reduce the road and pull it away from South Orange Avenue was to reach out to Chief Marky, knowing that one of the key factors in determining the width was going to be what he would need and his team for service vehicles, you know, their apparatus. He noted that, I personally spoke to him, he noted that the minimum requirement that he needed for his firefighting apparatus was 18 feet. So we went with the 18-foot layout. The majority of the road is 18 feet. What we did do is provide a bump out where we have a 24-foot wide width so that we could prevent jam-ups with trucks trying to pass each other in an 18-foot roadway. So it's sort of a bump out to kind of pull off, let a truck pass. We don't think this is going to be used frequently, but rather than trying to potentially squeeze two tractor trailers, or even a box truck and a tractor trailer, pass each other in the 18-foot width, we'd have this ability to get them to move quicker. This will only be used for passing. This is not going to be used for sitting and standing or anything like that. It's just for travel. And then one of the big concerns was the proximity of the road to South Orange Avenue, particularly as it goes around Cabrini Hall. The original plan had the existing asphalt pushing closer to South Orange Avenue. We reevaluated the truck vehicular movements. I believe we had a plan submitted with this drawing in July as well that showed the revised truck routing. So we were able to pull, with some shifting of the curb at Cabrini, we were able to pull our proposed curb line back to the existing asphalt line. So as trucks come around Cabrini Hall, and for about 75% to 80% of Cabrini Hall, there is no change in where that existing asphalt is. From there, the asphalt obviously extends up into the service road. We are about five feet closer to South Orange Avenue as you pass Cabrini Hall before Fahy Hall. And then we did pull the road further back from South Orange Avenue than our original application. Range is between two and five feet. The turnaround itself was pulled back about three feet. That's up here. And one location just east of Elm Court, which would be right about here, we were able to pull this in with an arc and pull that about 15 feet away from where it previously was located.
So those are the principal design changes.
Yeah. I know there was also a question about the new impervious that came up with the service road. The service road itself creates about 21,000 square feet of impervious. The original layout of the road was closer to 26,000, so we were able to pull about 5,000 square feet of impervious out of the project by shifting this road, or by narrowing the roadway to the 18 feet from 25, or 24 feet.
All right. And you previously testified regarding stormwater issues?
Yes.
Is that correct? And do these changes have any negative effect on either stormwater quantity or quality management?
No, these will actually have a positive effect by reducing the generation of stormwater, by reducing the impervious surface.
All right. All right. Now, with respect to the service road, did you approach the rescue squad at South Orange regarding this road?
Yes, I reached out to the rescue squad after the last meeting, I believe, and had spoken to them about the roadway, sent them some drawings via email for them to review, including this updated drawing, and then explained what I had discussed with Chief Marky.
All right. And did they provide you with this letter dated September 8th, 2003?
Yeah. The letter was sent directly to the board, but I've seen a copy of it.
Okay. So it was sent directly to the board by the...
Yes.
Let's mark this. I think we're probably up to, I think we're up to A17. So this would be 17, I think, right? So I'm going to mark as A17 a letter from the South Orange Rescue Squad to the chairman and members of the board on September 8th, 2013. This is the letter you're talking about.
Correct.
And just summarize what the letter says.
They're basically agreeing that the 18-foot that Chief Marky requires is more than adequate for what they need for their equipment. And they follow up supporting the road as Chief Marky had because it does allow them more access to the site for emergency situations that they don't have right now.
Okay. Now, one of the other questions that came up when you were here last is, is the construction staging for this project, is it going to be near South Orange Avenue?
There will be some staging near South Orange Avenue. The logistics of all the staging have not been worked out, but we do know that this service road is going to be built and will be the main access to a significant portion of the construction. Obviously, they'll be internal, depending on what portion of the project they're working on. Obviously, this is a long building, so it's... Obviously, this is a long building, so it stretches from Seton Drive up. And in some discussions, there has been talk of using portions of Cabrini's parking lot as staging storing areas.
All right. But there will be portions of the staging further back on campus, is that not so?
Correct. The intent is to keep everything as far away from South Orange as there's a significant amount of existing large trees here. Maybe not a significant amount, a decent amount. And there's also the intent to install some of the larger landscaping, which we'll be talked about later, early on in the stage to help screen even the construction process.
All right. Now, since you testified last, Almond Engineering did a report, is that not so?
Yes, they had a follow-up report to the July submitted drawings.
Okay. And just to go over four of their questions, they said the impacts of existing parking in the parking lot east of Cabrini should be identified and compared to the impacts of the prior plan. Can you explain that?
Yeah, they're talking about Cabrini Hall is located here, and South Orange Avenue here, Seton Hall main entrance, Central Avenue's over this side. To facilitate the truck turning as well as pulling off the roadway, we gave the trucks more space as they pass Cabrini heading towards South Orange Avenue, which shifts some of the curbing and results in a loss of seven to eight spaces.
All right. Is that material in any way to this application?
No.
Okay. Then they indicate signage should be provided to identify the use of the pullout area and to prevent parking in the area. Is that acceptable?
That's acceptable, and that's the area we were speaking about before.
And then they ask with respect to truck turning, that you would prepare an enlargement of that area?
Yes, we did have a plan. Because it's such a large service road, it's hard to see all the line work, but we can provide some enlargements so that Almond can review it and confirm that everything's adequate.
Okay.
I checked the plan again back in July, but again tonight. And the maneuvering that we are doing does not encroach on the proposed curb lines.
All right. Now, the last thing that they mentioned would be the accessory structures with respect to temporary dining. Do you recall that?
Yes.
All right. Would you just address that comment?
We had several accessory structures in the original application. We relocated some of them during the July drawing submission. And specifically, they were speaking of an area along the south side of the service road adjacent to the nursing arts and science area or buildings, which there is some existing grading, I'll say steep, not super steep, but steep grading. It's not flat there. In the proposed scenario, we have the same thing. So they were questioning how these would be installed. It's likely there'll be some temporary grading changes, and then portions of the units will be supported along the service road, and there'll be stairs leading in and out of the, they're basically food storage freezers. So it's something we can, we can work and we can provide a little more information on.
So you, but you've endeavored to place these temporary structures in flat areas? Is that so?
There's not a lot of flat, actually, what we endeavored to do was try and get them as far away from South Orange Avenue as possible, and then move the bulk of them to the south side, which has the grading, existing grading issues. So the idea is, you know, we'll have to work with what we have. It's all going to get regraded to the proposed design when everything's said and done and those structures are removed.
All right. So you've moved them as far away from South Orange Avenue as possible? Is that what you testified?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I don't have any more questions for Mr. Di Giacinto.
Board? What, the, moving them as far with the temporary structures, is that for visibility issues? I assume they're not making any noise?
No, the noise level on those should be very, very, very low. You know, refrigerator.
The changed, what was the original width? They changed 18 feet. What was the original width?
The original width of the roadway was 24 feet for the entire length.
I see. So you've reduced it down to 18, which is still his minimum threshold?
That's the minimum for the fire department requirements.
And just, I assume this is an obvious question, but the reason for swinging the road further to the south away from South Orange Avenue, has that been in response to previous questions from?
Correct. We tried to do everything we could to get it as far away from South Orange Avenue that realistically worked without causing other significant problems to the site like existing utilities and things.
And my last question, but we may need the sound engineer back or the acoustic consultant. Did his readings take place from that location or from the previous location?
I'm not exactly sure where all the locations are. I know the turnaround itself is not significantly different. It's only about three feet further than what we originally submitted. The bulk of this road, like I said, the bulk of it's three to five feet. I think closest, I said to Elm Court, it's about 15 feet further away. But that result is essentially from the narrowing from 24 to 18 feet.
I see. Board, any questions? Eli?
The, you mentioned that the road is widened at one point so that trucks can pass?
Yes.
What is going to be the protocol in terms of dealing with trucks if multiple trucks come in at the same time or close to the same time, or if a truck comes in the driveway when another truck is already at the loading dock?
The loading dock is sized to handle, I believe, two trucks at one time, based on the number of trucks that the university anticipates through the day. You know, the 14 to 15 throughout the day, the likelihood of more than two being there at any time is pretty low.
But if there were more than two, what would, where would the third one queue during that?
The third truck is likely to queue maybe in the circle here, or it could be held back at Cabrini. It's something, I don't know what the university's protocol would be for that scenario.
Thank you.
During, during your construction phase, you're saying that you're not going to be staging trucks along this road?
On the service road?
Yeah, on the, on the service road.
There will probably be some trucks staged on that service road at certain times.
And how are you going to control the noise, in particular of cement trucks that are constantly churning and engines running and so forth?
I know the university is going to work with the construction manager to try and, you know, do the best they can to eliminate as much annoyance as possible.
Pull that up just a little bit, Mike.
Sorry. The plan is to coordinate with the construction manager to try and time these things at certain times of day, time it so that they're not sitting and waiting and stacking up, you know, eight concrete trucks are sitting there all day spinning. And again, Cabrini lot is going to be available to use for staging, so if we're in a situation where, like you said, construct, the concrete trucks would tend to spin and make more noise, they can stage them here as opposed to up against South Orange Avenue, which would be obviously more of an annoyance.
And Michael, I mean, I think it's not unlikely, not unreasonable to imagine that even if they weren't going to create the service road for, permanently, they would have something like that to build it for.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I don't see the service road as contributing to any kind of construction congestion.
No, it's just that it's a noise level.
But it would be there, it might be there whether or not that service road was going to be permanent or not.
Yeah, because we all have seen construction with trucks where they stage and stack and what they do.
No, my point is, I'm not sure we can, we can.
No, it's just going to be a mess.
Attribute that to the, to this proposal for having a service road there.
No, not the least. I agree.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much. Oh, yes. I haven't forgotten you, Uli. Come on.
My, my, one comment on that, just a final, and I recognize it's going to happen noise. I would just hope that the university uses every tool at their disposal to try and control it.
Yes.
And keep the noise levels down. Please, during construction.
I have a question regarding the staging issue.
Give us your name again, for everybody, for the record.
Will there be an entrance, a construction entrance from South Orange Avenue onto Seton Hall as there was in the summer? So somebody opened the fence and then trucks were going in and out.
No, the intent is to use the existing Central Avenue or Center Street main access to the campus.
So just to be clear, so that will not happen? You will not touch the fence, no entrance of trucks like in the summer through there?
That is my understanding.
Thank you.
Sir, say your name again. We just.
Uli Kremah.
Thank you. Anybody else? You know, if you don't feel too uncomfortable, you just stand behind him, and then as soon as he finishes, you can come up rather than sit.
Oh, okay.
Just cue you right up there. Don't make any noise.
So John Gay. I'm not sure if this is for you or for the landscape person, but what, if anything, did you, did Seton Hall do to, or consider to reduce the noise generated on the service road of the trucks either during construction or after? I'm talking about something that would be more of like a permanent thing, not we're going to try to do our best to make sure they don't park there too often or something like that.
You will hear testimony about the landscape architecture. We have done quite a bit of additional landscaping along that service road between large trees and shrubs. I think that's the bulk of buffering.
Is there anything that's designed to reduce the noise, though? Because I would imagine shrubs don't exactly, maybe we can get the noise expert back, but I'm assuming shrubs don't really reduce noise much.
They help a little. I'm sure the noise expert can testify to that. I can testify to myself because I don't hear the train that's a mile away from me in the summer, but in the winter I do.
Okay. All right. But it, but there's no, other than the trees and the shrubs, there's nothing in the landscaping that you're aware of that's going to, designed to reduce noise from the?
No, we don't have any sound reduction walls or any features like that. There is a little bit of berming with the grading at the turnaround area, but that's about the bulk of the significance. In terms of the berming, I don't think we would be able to berm significantly enough that it would help reduce noise from the trucks.
Why is that?
The existing grades, the grades that we have to work towards South Orange Avenue and the existing trees, existing trees of the size of most of these large trees here, which the landscape architect can confirm, if you try and bury them more than a foot from the, you know, if you raise grade more than a foot at their base, they're going to die. That would essentially, trying to berm along here would probably require removing the majority of the existing mature trees that are there in trying to berm enough that it would make any significant difference. And the sound expert may be able to say how much a berm would get, but I don't think a three-foot berm is going to do very much.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Next witness would be Mr. Scherza, who's the landscape architect.
I think we should swear. You end first?
Yeah.
Your name, please. Counsel, we have his name and then.
Okay. Would you give your name for the record, Mr. Scherza?
Sure. I'm Michael Zora. I'm a principal and a landscape architect at Langen Engineering.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Sure. It's S like Sam, Z like zebra, U R A.
All right. And?
I'd like to swear.
Okay.
Mr. Scherza, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. What is your profession?
I'm a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey and several other states.
All right. And what is the role of a landscape architect?
In many cases, as in the case of this project, we design the landscape plantings and the site lighting for projects like this.
All right. And can you give the board some idea of your experience in this field?
Sure. I've been at Langen for 13 years, not 41, a licensed landscape architect for more than 10. I have testified before this board as well as numerous other boards in New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania.
All right. And what's your educational background?
I graduated with an undergraduate degree from Rutgers University and a master's degree from the University of Pennsylvania.
All right. I'd like to offer the witness as an expert in the field of landscape architecture.
Except, thank you. Were those degrees, were those degrees in landscape architecture or just general academic degrees?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see where the question was coming from. My first degree from Rutgers was in botany, business, and a concentration in marketing. And my master's degree is in landscape architecture from the University of Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
All right. All right. What was your assignment on this project?
My assignment on this project was to design an attractive, safe, and functional landscape for the new building and to develop the site lighting plan for the project.
All right. And what was the result of, the product of your efforts? Can you explain that to the board?
Sure. We prepared a number of technical drawings describing the location, size, species of landscape plantings that are to be installed, as well as what and the methodology by which existing significant trees in and around the new building would be preserved. And we also prepared the technical drawings, details, and specifications for the site lighting.
All right. And do you have a board that you'd like to discuss with the board?
Sure. I can summarize the landscape plantings, and maybe I'll begin by addressing the area around the service drive as that's been a topic for discussion this evening.
All right. Why don't you just describe it?
Sure. Here on the easel, I have a drawing titled Landscape Plan Service Road, and the drawing number is LP 102.
All right. And this has not been previously submitted to the board, is that correct?
This one has not been submitted to the board.
All right. So this will be marked as A18.
What's the revision date?
Excuse me?
What's the revision date?
Just a moment. That was actually revision date of 12/13/13.
Okay.
And basically, the plan that we see before us is indicating the location of existing trees to remain on South Orange Avenue as determined by our survey, and the proposed plantings that run along the drive and the turnaround circle. Just to kind of summarize and give an order of magnitude to the plantings, we have seven proposed new shade trees, oak and maple trees that are three and a half to four-inch caliper, which is the trunk size. We've got 35 ornamental trees proposed, mostly amalacure, red bud. Those are going to be planted at 14 to 16 foot in height as they're installed. We have 154 evergreen trees, which are comprised of cedar, spruce trees, and holly trees. They'll be six to seven feet at the time of installation and eight to 10 feet at the time of installation, depending on the species. We also are proposing over 350 evergreen shrubs, which are mainly comprised of junipers, rhododendron, viburnums, and several other species, and they're ranged between 18 and 24 inches, three to four feet, four to five feet, depending on the species. So we're really creating an attractive landscape fronting on South Orange Avenue. The nice thing about the plan is that it's kind of balancing some of the commentary we've heard about the desire to maintain an open feel, a nice view into the campus, yet we're looking yet we're looking to create an attractive buffer for any of the vehicles that would be on the service drive.
And is there anything that you'd like to add in terms of explaining how you address the concerns of the residents?
Yeah, we really, we really took a look at what the views would be like from South Orange Ave and from the streets that tee into South Orange Ave. And again, tried to create an attractive edge without creating a solid wall. This plan was revised as the service road was made more narrow. And we were able to pull the plantings in closer to the service drive and allow for some lawn space in between the buffer planting and South Orange Avenue.
Now, you also mentioned you've been involved in coming up with a lighting plan?
That's correct.
All right, and what is involved in that?
We, I have a lighting plan, which maybe I'll pull out. Just a moment.
So the plan you put up on the easel is a lighting plan, and that's not previously been submitted to the board?
That's correct. It has not been submitted yet.
All right, so we're going to label that as A 19. Could you just describe it for the record?
A 19, and this is in a sketch form. We have it titled Lighting Sketch, S.K.L.T. 06.
All right, what's the revision date?
The revision date is, no, the original date is June 17th. There's no revision because it was not submitted.
Okay, June 17, 2013?
That's correct.
All right, so what was your intent with respect to developing this lighting plan?
The intent and what we have shown in this plan is we actually went and determined the fixtures that are located along South Orange Ave currently. We looked at the few fixtures that are on the, on the, the end of the service road, which would be an area right now that's adjacent to Cabrini Hall. And in keeping with the concerns for creating a safe and adequate life level, but a low light level, we developed a design for the service drive that incorporated the university standard fixture at a spacing that we believe provides adequate light levels without providing any more that's really necessary. And in this plan, summarize. In this plan, we're using 16 of the Seton Hall standard fixtures. Located on this plan is indicated by the letter A next to the graphic representation of the light fixture. And these are 150 watt metal halide fixtures, the campus standard. They are cutoff fixtures, so they're casting light downward, and the mounting height on the luminaire is 12 feet above finished grade.
And are these constant lighting or any on timers or do you have a plan for that?
We need to discuss the operational aspects with the university, but they would not be on during the day. They would be tied to a photo cell, I would imagine, in the end. They'd be tied to a photo cell in the end. Like I said, the final operational hours will be something we'll need to fine tune with the university, but they'll only be on when they're necessary.
Okay, and, and it's a low, low level of lighting that you've, for enough safety for what? For pedestrian to walk up the road?
Yeah, you know, this area is really not being designed as a pedestrian thoroughfare. The one area where the gate and security phone is today is illuminated with a light fixture. And we have placed one additional proposed fixture right near that. But the intent here is to just provide enough lighting so that it's adequate for security. Obviously, the delivery vehicles that may come, you know, at four o'clock on a winter day like today have, have their own headlights. But we are providing enough ambient light just to, just to enhance the visibility for security reasons. That's all.
All right. Okay, no, I have no further questions.
Thank you, board. Dan? Can you, can you just go back to the landscape for a minute? Is the landscaping, if, when I drive by, there's a fence along South Orange Avenue, correct?
There is a fence.
Okay. Now, is the landscaping inside the fence or outside the fence? And is the fence remaining?
The, the fence remains. So the proposed plantings, I'll try to indicate for you here. You can see the curb line at South Orange Ave is here. The property line is inboard of the sidewalk, and then the fence line runs inside that. So all of the proposed landscape plantings are inside the fence.
Thank you. In terms of the lighting, would you, what could you describe in general terms what you would perceive from South Orange Avenue and from across South Orange Avenue if you were either walking or living there?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I'm pulling back up the sketch, S.K.L.T. 06, the exhibit A 19. And from the drawing and the model that we created here, you can see, number one, that the light levels on South Orange Avenue, on the cartway and on the sidewalk, are actually significantly higher than what's being proposed on the service drive. For instance, the average foot candles on the roadway are 1.7 foot candles. And those are the existing fixtures that are in place today. The light fixtures that we have proposed for the service drive, as I mentioned, they are cutoff fixtures, which means that the way the fixture is designed and the optic systems that are involved with this fixture, the light is being cast downward. So looking towards the service drive from even the sidewalk on South Orange Avenue, you're not going to see the source of light. You're not going to be able to see the lamp itself. You'll see the light as it's cast onto the ground and the surface is supposed to be illuminating, but you won't see the light itself. So just going back to the illustration about the light levels, as I said, the average foot candle reading on South Orange Ave today is about 1.7 foot candles. And what we're proposing on the drive aisle is about half of that. It's about 0.9 foot candles. So it's, it's very modestly illuminated.
What's the light, the lamp type on South Orange Avenue?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
What's the lamp type? Is it metal halide as well?
I don't believe so. I believe it's high pressure sodium.
And metal halide is white?
No, it's kind of more yellowish, but I'm not 100% sure. I'm sorry. I'm not sure on the light.
No, between the two colors, between high pressure sodium and metal halide, so?
Lamp color on high pressure sodium is going to tend to be a goldy orange color. Whereas the fixtures we're proposing, the metal halide fixtures are more clear white color.
Is there a reason you don't match what's on the street or?
The, the general sense of security and safety and color rendition. The Illuminating Engineers Society of North America definitely states that when you're utilizing a lamp, like a metal halide lamp, which we're proposing, colors are much more realistically rendered. I can tell what color shirt you're wearing, if you're wearing blue or black from here. I can see that under metal halide. Under high pressure sodium, I might think you're wearing green.
So this is, these lights are really for security because you're not going to have any nighttime deliveries, is that correct?
It really is for security. So in the case of, you know, looking for someone wearing a green jacket versus a blue jacket, and you look a whole lot more handsome under metal halide light than high pressure sodium, so keep that in mind.
Board, any questions, more questions?
I would just assume that the plans that have not been submitted will be submitted to our planner and to the town engineer for their review.
Yeah, do we not get a lighting submitted on the first, did you ask for it?
We, that, well, that was, Mr. Chairman, that was one of my questions. The last, at least for landscaping, the last landscape plan we have is dated 7/2. And so I guess, what's the difference between the one that I think all the board members have, correct?
Well, landscape, but we apparently don't have a lighting plan.
But we don't have, we don't have the light, but I'm not sure that, what I understood, the date of that even landscape plan was not set for 2.
Okay, let's, let's deal with the landscape first.
Sure, let me clarify. You're, you're correct. The lighting plan has not been finalized or submitted. The sketches here for discussion this evening, that, that will be submitted. The landscape plan, the, the one that I'm referring to and has been marked exhibit A 18, has not been submitted either. The one difference between what you have and this plan here is that since the service road got narrower, we were able to move the landscape planting a little bit closer to the service road. That's the, the material change in the plan. The quantities are the same.
Thank you.
Did we ask for the lighting plan in any of our comments? Some way we're finally getting it?
I assume we're going to get the revisions.
You're going to get them, yes. They were not requested.
I'm just surprised, Counsel, we didn't have a lighting plan in the original submitted.
I don't recall.
Okay. Okay. All right, anybody from the public would like questions for the landscape? Please come up, state your name, and even though we know it.
Uli Kremmer. I might have missed that, but how many old trees will you take out as part of the redesign of the landscape?
Good question.
Just a comment. You couldn't see any of these plants.
I don't have the demolition plan here in front of me. I think the count for removing was about eight, maybe? But I can, I can get a firm number for you.
And how does that compare to the count population in the front yard there? Is eight, 5% is eight, 50% is eight, 80%?
Well, we're putting back a significant number of trees. I would say it's less, less than a quarter of the existing trees out there. We really didn't do a study to determine a total tree count on the frontage. But as I mentioned, you know, for the seven or eight we're removing, we're putting back seven or eight shade trees plus 100 evergreens and 30 ornamental trees.
My question was more, what do you take out from the existing old growth, basically? So you're saying around eight?
There are some older trees, yeah.
I, questions regarding the lighting. So the service road is mainly designed for trucks to service, yeah, the building, the new building?
Delivery vehicles.
What is the, are the operation hours of these lights? You mentioned there will be photo cells. Will this be on all night? Or when will, what, what's the operation time of these lights?
Yeah, I don't anticipate that they'll be on all night. The, the specifics of what fixtures will be on will be something we'll fine tune with the university. But I know based on the earlier testimony about the hours they expect service, I don't see a need to have all the fixtures on all the time.
So can you be more specific? Is it on 10 o'clock it will shut off, and 7 o'clock it goes on? I mean, you don't expect pedestrian traffic over there?
No, it's not being designed for pedestrians, and I can't really speak to the operation hours myself. I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, I think we're going to have the university come up and address that question too. Because I think the board wants to know when the lights are going to be on till and why. I think we have one more question coming up, and, yeah. So if you stood there, we know you're ready to, that's why we?
I mostly wanted to come up and see what the plan looked like because I didn't, haven't seen it yet for the shrubs and the other.
Mr. Gay, state your name, please.
Oh, sure, sorry. John Gay. Did you, just from, from South Orange Avenue around this loading dock?
Stay, stay, bring that microphone with you or stay close to it.
From South Orange Avenue around the loading dock area, what am I going to be able to see from the street here? Am I going to be able to see anything relating to the loading dock, anything relating to the turnaround? Any of the vehicles that are going to be driving there?
Yeah, we, to really maybe answer that, maybe it's best to refer to the section drawings that we prepared. The, the drawings that I'll bring out next were previously submitted. There were some comments that were requesting dimensions to be added to the plans. As I was saying earlier, we're planting this generous screen. At day one, you'll have more visibility than you will 10 years in. But as you can see, there's a significant number of plantings here. A box truck, you're probably going to see the top of it, you know, at installation, just based on the size of the trees that I was discussing before. But again, because of the existing trees along South Orange Avenue and the extent to which we've planted the buffer, I think it's a, it's a very, very heavily planted edge.
What about the loading dock? What about the loading dock itself? The, you know, the, see, it was a tall door. And from earlier testimony, they said it was going to be left open during portions of the day. I think significant portions of the day from South Orange Avenue, am I going to be able to see any portion of that loading dock area?
Try and stay close to that mic. Just keep that mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I going, from South Orange Avenue, am I going to be able to see any portions of the loading dock area with the door open?
Yeah, I, really depend on where you're standing and at what elevation. But I think at day one, there'll be some views. You'll be able to see some things.
Was there any thought or given to any kind of a berm or some hardscape or some other thing that would, you know, reduce some of the noise coming from that area?
The, the goal of the landscape plan was a visual buffer. So while you heard in the testimony of the noise consultant, various elements are being placed in between you, the viewer, the motorist, the pedestrian. We're really only breaking the line of sight with, with the plantings. It's not being planted as a, as an audible buffer.
Is it possible for you to put something in that would be an audible buffer in there?
Not, not in this current plan. I mean, the current plan really shows significant vegetation, evergreen trees and such.
What about if the plan were, I mean, is it possible, theoretically possible, now maybe not under the current plan, to have something that would be a bit more of a noise buffer than simply having evergreen trees?
I don't know that this is a question for this witness, and you've already asked it of the site engineer who said no?
Well, I thought you told me to talk to the landscape.
No, no. Not, not about the berm. That's what you're asking about, right?
The question really was before, Counsel, that the possibility of doing a berm. The engineer said that it would have a, you know, murderous effect on the existing trees or on the, and so I think you need to answer that.
If, if that's the question, yeah, I didn't understand that to be the question. I'm sorry.
The berm or some other, I mean, I said a berm, but whatever, you're the, you're the expert. Perhaps there's something else out there that would be able to dampen the noise more than an evergreen tree.
Yeah, the, the reason a berm was not incorporated into the design to create it at a significant enough height where it would have an advantage in terms of sound attenuation, it would be a very high berm, but it would also impact more trees along South Orange Avenue because of the filling over the root zone, which would be detrimental to the trees.
You're saying the existing trees or trees that you were planning?
The, the existing trees, which we understood was a significant resource for the community and Seton Hall.
Okay. Anybody else out there? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Mr. John or Dennis?
Okay, Mr. Garbini, Dennis Garbini, who's been previously sworn. I think there are two, two questions. Number one, the lighting, and when are you going to turn the lights off? Do you have a plan for that?
Well, we hadn't considered a plan to turn these lights off because quite frankly, between the, the berm and the vegetation, plus the, the lighting, I mean, the, the street lighting, which these lights would get lost in anyway, there had not been a plan to, to throw, to have these lights turn off at night. Clearly, that's possible, and the university would be glad to go ahead and make that decision as, as the, as we move forward.
Is the building lights going to be off at night? Is that in the new center?
Would the building lights be on?
Off.
Well, the building would be, the building obviously internally would be lit, and I would imagine we would have some soft architectural lighting, but there would be, right?
No, but do the building lights go off at 1 o'clock or 12 o'clock?
That's correct.
Okay.
But, I mean, just like all of us have lighting around our homes that may stay on until 11 o'clock or so, and, and on the campus would be desirable to have some lights on around the building.
Definitely. Right. I don't know whether it was a question for the university, but the deliveries will be made during the daylight hours, is that correct?
The deliveries are made during the daylight hours.
I think there was one other question regarding the trash compactors. I don't know if you can answer that, whether they're interior to the building or outside.
Currently, there are trash deliveries, trash receptacles at Faye Hall existing, and there have never been any complaints about that. But any trash compactors that we will be adding in this area are going to be internal to the building.
Okay.
And I, and I don't know whether it's out of place, but my, it does strike me, not being an expert on sound, that if we were to put any kind of hard barrier, sound barrier up, as we've already heard this, if we put any sound barrier up, it would probably have a worse effect bouncing back at the homes, the, the more substantial noise coming from South Orange Avenue, than the few trucks that might be traveling up and down the delivery.
We're going to confirm that with your testimony, your expert, but it's a good point. All right. If you don't have any more questions for Mr. Garbini, I'd like to call Mr. Woodruff. Please. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garbini.
Do, do we need to make sure nobody in the public is to come?
Does anybody, oh, while you're standing there, that's, thank you. Anybody from the public have any questions for Mr. Garbini? No. Yes.
Willie Kramer, five and call. I had the question with the trash compactor in the context of the noise study. What happened with the trash? Meaning, there would be trash trucks coming in, and how do they get the trash into the truck? I mean, I'm also from the university. I mean, if they, they come with a container, that's, that's a racket. If they go, they lift this up, they, they dump it in there. So what is the noise impact of getting rid of that trash? What is the strategy to remove that, and what will be the noise impact?
Noise issue. That was not studied. Perhaps you could describe how it's picked up, how it will be picked up, and when?
Well, currently, in Faye Hall, as you, as you know, there are two, I believe, receptacles that are picked up and, and in fact dumped. And I, and again, I re-
That's rather general, I mean.
Well, the fact that you don't seem to be aware of it would indicate it really hasn't been problematic.
This will be now towards us, meaning towards South Orange.
These, these two, the ones I'm speaking of, sir, are, are, are right at, at you currently, right at facing South Orange Avenue, in the back of Faye Hall.
Well, be that as it may, for the record, how is it going to be done in the future for the university?
In the future, the, the, the trash that would be picked up from the, from the university center, loading dock would be done backing up to the back of the building, and probably, the back of that truck would probably be buffering most of that sound.
So it's loaded from the loading dock into the truck?
Into the, correct.
So it's a container, how, how do I?
Yes.
It's a single container that gets onto the truck, and then the truck drives off of that container?
Yes, and then probably, and replaced, right.
Okay, thanks.
And do those, is that during daylight hours?
Yes, let's.
Okay. One more question, I think.
Good evening. John Teefert, 104 South Kingman Road. The compactors that are going in the new building, will they take over from the need in other parts of the campus? And by that, I'm asking, will some of the several containers that are currently visible from South Orange Avenue and Ward Place be made obsolete and removed?
No, they, the, the comp, the trash containers that are in the, that we're talking about in the, the new section of the building will service the, I, just that building. The, what you're, what you say on Ward Place would remain there, and, and the back of Faye Hall would remain there.
Thank you.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, last witness would be Mr. Woodruff. Thank you. All right, Mr. Woodruff, what is your profession? First, please state your name and your place of business. State your name and-
Name first.
Sure.
Greg Woodruff. Last name is spelled W-O-O-D-R-U-F-F.
All right, and, uh-
And, Mr. Woodruff, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Woodruff, what is your profession?
Certainly, I'm a senior project manager at Langen Engineering Environmental Services. I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey, as well as nationally through the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've appeared before, I don't know the official count, probably somewhere between 25 and 30 boards throughout the state, including the South Orange zoning board on previous matters.
All right. And are you a member of any planning society or that sort of thing?
I am a member of the American Planning Association, including the New Jersey chapter of the American Planning Association.
All right. And do you regularly do planning work for your firm, for Langen?
I do. I'm involved in a variety of land development activities and, and testify as a professional planner on applications very similar to this, as I said, you know, on the order of 25 through 30 municipalities throughout the state.
All right. I'd like to offer him as a planner. Except, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Woodruff, just to start out, what are the two variances that the university requires on this application?
Certainly, as, as you all, we've heard throughout the, the period, you've heard a lot of testimony, there are two bulk issues that the applicant is seeking relief on. The first relates to the maximum building height whereby 75 feet is permitted. They are requesting or proposing a maximum height of 80 feet, eight inches, and we'll talk a little bit more about the specifics of where that maximum occurs and, and some of those issues. The second issue relates to the minimum distance between buildings within the university zone. A 50-foot separation is required. They are proposing between 27 and 28 feet in one specific location between the proposed building and adjacent Xavier Hall.
All right. All right. So let's start with the height variance, first of all.
Certainly.
All right. So this is a C variance?
Correct. C variances, the, the proofs for C variances, as the Board well knows, but for the sake of record and, and others in the room, the proofs are, are sort of threefold. The first being potentially that there is some irregularity or difficulty in the physical aspects of the site that prevent complying with that bulk requirement. The other would be essentially a balancing test of the positives of what is being asked outweighing the detriments of what might be caused by the deviation. And in both cases, there's always a requirement to prove that there's no detriment, substantial detriment to the, the zone plan and the zoning ordinance.
All right. And which var, which C variance are, are you proceeding under?
In my opinion, both of these requests fall under the, the, the proof requirements of a C2 variance whereby the, the benefits of what's being asked for in terms of a deviation outweigh detriments that, that might arise.
All right. And what's your rationale for the grant of this variance under C2 for the height variance?
Sure. So relative to the height variance, height variance is obviously the intent of the ordinance is to prevent buildings that, you know, are not too tall, obviously, and, and, but more importantly, out of character with the overall zone. We are in the university zone as well as the, the special district A. It's a permitted use. You have a university, an existing thriving university on the campus. There was a study done relative to some adjacent building heights, and some of those heights include Walsh Library at 94 feet with an average dome height of about 86. The Xavier Hall has a, a maximum height of about 76, 77, excuse me, 77 and a half feet. So in, in terms of the, the benefits and the relative character of the zone, there are adjacent buildings with heights on this order. There is also another aspect of this that, that the board really needs to consider in that the, the deviating portion of the height relates to a central atrium area of the building. It's not the entirety of the building, it's a central atrium area, and more specifically, the facade of that atrium. It's not the actual mass of the atrium itself. There's a, a thin facade piece that extends to that height for a, for a short width distance, and then the actual mass of the roof line, which is the majority of the actual building height, extends to a height of 76 feet, four inches. Again, 75 feet is permitted. So you're really, in, in my perspective, from a planning perspective, talking about a deviation of one foot, four inches for the majority of the building, and you have this specific facade, thin facade area that extends to that 80 feet, eight inches. So the, the benefits that are offered are a building that is in scale for its size and overall architectural design. There's a minimal atrium area that really serves as, as one of the signature points of the building and its overall design, creating a, a new university center for Seton Hall for it to remain competitive, to, to service its, its future, its current and future student needs, while balancing that against the potential detriment, again, of that, that 76 feet, four inch really mass that extends an extremely de minimis amount above the permitted 75 feet. So in my opinion, there's no substantial detriment or impairment to the, the zone plan or the zoning ordinance relative to what is being requested.
All right. And, and is the, this, this variance precedential in any way in terms of the uniqueness of the zone? I mean, it's a, it's a university zone.
Correct, right. It's a university zone. This is a, a clearly a central university use building. It will be one of the central buildings on campus that services student needs.
All right. Okay, so now, now the other variance has to do with the distance between buildings.
Certainly.
And what's the, what is required?
A 50-foot setback distance is required between buildings. The current distance between the current Duffy Hall and Xavier Hall is plus or minus 37 feet, so the new building will actually create a, a closer setback by about 10 feet than what exists between existing Duffy Hall and, and Xavier Hall. The unique issue there, and I think really leads to the, to the major benefit of this proposal, that is really resulting from the fact that the applicant, the university, has endeavored to pull the, the proposed building back from its neighbors, and therefore it, it causes it to shift, you know, that the space just sort of shifts sideways toward their internal space, their internal buildings, but further away from their adjacent neighbors, which are residential properties. So in, in an effort to try and reduce their, you know, sort of impact outward from campus, it creates a, a little bit of a, a greater deviation in that setback distance to their own internal building, but that deviation already exists at 37 feet, and it essentially narrows down to 27 feet under the, the proposed plan.
All right. You're talking about the neighbors that border special district A?
Correct, yes.
Those are the neighbors you're talking about?
I'm sorry, yes.
Talking about? So the building is a little bit less close than the existing building?
Correct. I believe, I have the number, we took it off the plan. It actually, the, from where the building edge of current Duffy Hall is to where the proposed building wall will be, gets pulled back about 28 feet. So it, you know, we're not talking about, you know, two feet, four inches. I mean, it's, it's a significant distance that the proposed building gets pulled back further from the residence along that special district A boundary with the campus, and that's just sort of spatially what shift, then shifts some of that space a little close, a little closer internally to the university Xavier Hall building.
And just, what features will there be in this 27-foot setback between the buildings?
Certainly. So the, the, within that 27-foot space between the proposed building and Xavier Hall, we're talking about, you know, sidewalks, a drive aisle under Xavier Hall, you know, uses that are in keeping with making the, the overall flow between and, and around the buildings function from a campus operations perspective.
All right. So to sum up, you feel that there are positive attributes that support these variances?
Correct. There, there are certainly benefits that, in my opinion, outweigh, again, the, the minimal detriments we've talked about relative to the ordinance requirements. There is no substantial impairment to the intent or purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance, and in my opinion, the, the variance requests meet the proof requirements and, and can be granted by the board.
Okay, no further questions? Thank you. Board, any questions for the planner? Dan?
The, the variance of the, of the distance between the two buildings, what's the length of the, of the area where the, where it will be narrower?
Say it again, because I want to make sure I understand exactly what you're asking.
Well, there, there's distance, you're narrowing the space between the two buildings, but how long, how long does that narrow space last? Is it three feet, it's 10 feet?
So, okay, so where it's 27 feet, how long is it 27 feet for?
Correct.
Okay. You know, I don't know the number to that off the top of my head, obviously, but we can measure it right off the plan if you're willing to bear with me. It's, I mean, if we, if we can pull the plan up and I can show you visually where it is, if that helps you, and then we can measure-
I'm just curious, I mean, we're talking about a block, we're talking about a-
No, 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 no. On, you know, on the order again, it's a corner of the building.
Pull the plan up, yeah, let's take a look again. So some of us couldn't find our-
The reason I ask the question, so as you go through that process, is, does this in any way impact the safety negatively of the students who are going to be there?
Well, it's 27 feet.
Um, I'll, I'll take your first question first and, and point out the area, and then I-
Take your microphone with you.
Yeah, sorry. So this is the area that I'm referring to drawing, because it was up here, the landscape plan labeled LP 101.
No, this is not, not the landscape plan.
Right?
No, it is, yeah.
I mean, we can refer to a different drawing, if, we can refer to the site plan if everyone's more comfortable, but it's all the same line work.
Yes.
So the section, for the sake of the record, that I'm pointing to is sort of the southerly edge of the proposed building, adjacent to Xavier Hall, so you can see the lighter-colored outline of Xavier Hall.
Counsel, please just step in.
Oh, sorry.
We can see a little bit. You have a pretty eyes to see this.
We gave it his invisible juice, but clearly it didn't work. So you can see the, the lightly-colored line work of the existing Xavier Hall building that I'm tracing, which is just to the sort of northeast of the proposed building. So we're talking about, what's the graphic scale?
Forty feet.
We're probably talking about on the order of 40 to 50 feet, where you, where you have that 27-foot distance between the two buildings.
So I'll go back. Do you believe that in any way this would negatively impact the safety of the students or the people who would be traversing that area?
I'm going to defer the safety question. I think that would probably be more like a site engineering issue rather than a planning issue.
Good timing.
Mostly because it, it relates to traffic flow and the interface of pedestrians and traffic, so I'm going to, I'm going to defer that one.
All right, he's here.
Yeah.
Your savior, he's here.
Robin's my Batman.
Uh, what I was coming to tell Greg some information, the 27 feet, 28 feet, there's an extension on Xavier Hall that's only 25 feet wide. Xavier, Xavier Hall overall is about 50 feet wide, but there's this extension that's about 25 feet. So we gain another eight feet, so we get back to the 36 feet. feet, so we gain another eight feet, so we get back to the 36 feet for a little bit on either side of that extension. In terms of your question of safety, materially, there's not a lot of change going on here. We still have the access aisle, we still do have some sidewalk and doorway. We've narrowed up the asphalt here, but it's not to the point where it's going to cause any problems with the traffic flow, and the amount of pedestrian traffic in this area is fairly low, most of the pedestrian traffic is actually further out and away from this area.
So, I don't mean to beat dead horse, but because you say that the traffic is very low, is it well lit enough that someone's not going to be impacted by walking through a dark, narrow space?
Yes. We're not creating a dark, narrow, unsafe space in any way, shape, or form.
Could I just have that witness's name?
John DeJasanta.
Board, any other questions? Do any questions from the public, please come up? Yep.
I wonder where I should set this up, if anywhere?
Right here. But you can, oh, do you want to present, you want to talk to it while you're...
Well, not really. What I have here, if I may?
Sure.
Is, a second ago, the witness had said that the plan remains in scale with the rest of campus. And what I prepared, you'll have to forgive me, it's a little bit amateurish, but as best I could, a scale model of the proposed building, which is nearly 400 feet from end to end, and so that I wouldn't be accused of exaggerating, this is about as wide as the narrowest point from the building. Looking at the submitted plans, I had trouble figuring out how tall to make it, because on the plans, the height of the building really isn't clearly defined. So I have the proposed building next to what the town engineer tells me is the current largest building in South Orange. There's no notch here, but it is a C-shaped building. It's the one directly across the street from Town Hall that's being restored.
So, you know, if the witness is going to, this was across the examination...
This is going to be a question.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I mean...
I'd like it to be sworn in for that background information on your model.
I guess, first thing would be to swear him in, the second thing, this is a question period, not a testimony period?
I think he's leading up to his question, I think it's fair to say, but go ahead and get sworn in. I'm not sure exactly why, because he's...
No, he doesn't need to be sworn in to ask questions.
We can take this on the face value of him making his own model, so I think, let's hear, why don't you proceed to your question? I think what you're presenting is different scales. I'm not sure, is that your house?
It is. How'd you guess?
So why don't you go ask your question?
Okay, well...
Because you have plenty of time to comment on the project after the question period is over.
Thank you. The specific question, once the height variance is granted, would that allow the rest of the structure to be built to the maximum height that's granted by the variance? Because that height, that roof line height, is not specifically given anywhere in the plans that have been submitted to the town, at least not that I can find.
I believe they are on the elevations, we'll make sure they are, but I can answer your question that we are approving a project that's been presented to us in specific drawings. If those drawings change, the applicant has to come back to this board in any substantial way, come back to this board in totality and re-present the project publicly.
Okay.
Yeah, we would agree with that, that the variance is related to the specific...
Nonetheless, we'll have a few, I don't have my drawings, but I will check to make sure that the, maybe our planner, I mean, our engineer can, to see if we have elevation heights on it.
Thank you.
Okay.
And my second question, having now come to quite a few of these meetings, another applicant was asked regarding a parking garage. Under the current code, there would have been something on the order of 200 parking spaces. He was requesting a variance for the width of the parking spaces that would allow a total of 220. So he was asked a specific question about the number of spaces that are allowed by code, and the number of spaces that would be generated by the variance. Seeing as this building is four times the size of the largest building currently standing in South Orange, how much bigger is this than what would simply be allowed without the variance?
First of all, I object to the question because it presumes facts not in evidence, particularly the questions about the size of the building being four times larger than the largest building in South Orange.
That wasn't, that was his assumption.
But if, if we eliminate that part of the question, could you rephrase your question?
I think you're asking, I mean, I think, understand that the variance, the size of the building in its square feet is not part, is as of right, there's nothing that we can do about that, per se.
I understand.
The closeness, the proximity to an adjacent building they're asking a variance for, and a particular exceeding height limitation on a particular part of the building.
Yes, and it's that height variance which changes the skyline, which makes the building visible from my neighborhood, which makes the top of the building more visible from South Orange Avenue, which changes the scale of the Village of South Orange.
Yeah, we have plenty of time to discuss that opinion, but, so your question is then, if I, should I rephrase, is your question whether or not the size of this building is permitted?
My question is, should the board decline these variances? How large of a structure could you construct?
I think you can answer that.
The university is within the FAR allowed in the zone, so the university could construct this very building if this variance were denied?
It would have to be shorter in some parts, and it would have to be more remote from that, it would have to be more separated from that one building.
Sure.
So its configuration would have to change.
Okay.
But they could do the same amount of square feet. In other words, the square foot, we're not here to rule on the square foot because we understand that that's permitted as of right.
Which I understand.
We are looking at two variances, one having to do with exceeding a height limitation, and the other is a proximity to another building. They could put that square feet somewhere else.
Sure, but both of those variances would change, if I understand correctly, the volume of the final structure.
The, in some respects, you're correct, the height would. I don't think the proximity to that other building would, because they could put that volume somewhere else.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
What's the intent of the rule that two buildings should be at least 50 feet apart?
It's...
Yeah, just play with it.
Maybe it's just a loose cord here. I believe the intent of ordinances that require setbacks between buildings is to ensure or to promote that the buildings not be located closer to one another, to create issues like the board member who asked the question about, you know, dark, small spaces, to prevent that from, things like that, issues like that from happening.
Do I assume correctly that this also includes fire hazards and fire happens, egress, so basic safety issues?
I believe those issues are more, you know, building code issues, and those issues are also being reviewed as part of, you know, the design of this building and reviewed by the relevant professionals. So I don't, I don't think a building setback issue relates to egress issues and things like that, those are really more, I think, I think building code issues would be my characterization.
But it may, it may have something to do with fire separation, and I'd like to hear the engineer from Langin, whether or not that's the case here, so after you're done, I'm going to ask him out.
Sure.
Well, if it's a fire safety issue, I would also like, I mean, you brought up the service road, that this would be, you asked the chief whether this is beneficial. Clean roads are beneficial because they increase access to buildings, so in this case, you actually make it harder, if I understand, if the buildings are closer together. So I would encourage you to ask the fire chief whether he thinks it's a good idea to bring buildings closer together from a safety point of view, since you also asked that for the service road.
That's a fair question.
Well, that's a statement, right?
I think with the board, if they need, if they find, they can request that from the fire chief to give his opinion on that proximity.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Maybe we could have the engineer come up from Langin, just to, whether or not that's even a criteria for zoning separation.
And what exactly is the question, make sure I...
The question would be, from this individual's wondering whether or not the separation between buildings has anything to do with fire protection.
No, whether that's an architectural or an engineering question?
Bring either one up.
Okay.
Both would be good, because we have to talk to the architect anyway.
Okay.
We're going to have to state your name and swear you in again.
Michael Shatken.
Spell that.
S-H-A-T-K-E-N.
Mr. Shatken, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Shatken, you've previously testified on this matter, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
All right, and you're an architect by profession?
I am an architect, and I can testify to, I think, there's two facets to the question. One is the proximity to the building, whether they create any firewall conditions that the plans do not address, and they are sufficiently separated and the building is designed to have the proper fire rating between the two buildings so that there is no hazard fire spreading from, from building to building. The other issue is the issue of, do both of the buildings have sufficient amount of access in accordance with the building code for fire emergencies? And again, the answer to that question is both, both buildings do have sufficient, they don't rely upon this area for their, for their access for firefighting purposes, and we, that is in accordance with the Uniform Construction Code of the state of New Jersey.
So, so in your opinion, the distance between these buildings, as it's been described, which is 27 feet and then going up to 36 feet for a portion, is safe and adequate?
In accordance with the Uniform Construction Code, that's correct.
Okay. Before we dismiss the architect, because I know the board, we haven't heard you for six, seven months or something, so could you briefly, but efficiently, explain to us why the height variance, or how the height variance has come about in a building of this scale? Why we are looking at an application that for some reason can't get the most, the majority of the roof in a, to conform with the permitted height? What is it about, either the stories, I know that you testified in your previous testimony that there's a relationship, more or less an aesthetic relationship, between the high roofs and the atrium roof, and that if we started to squash things down, we would lose that relationship, but what, what is it? Can you talk kind of factually? Why are we looking at a building that just couldn't make it to 75 feet? Does it have to do with the floor-to-floor, what is it exactly?
One of the significant factors with regard to this building is that it's located on a high point of the site, and if, the way the height is calculated is, it's the average height to grade. So what, what happens is, if you follow all the way around this entire building from the, you know, from the lowest, from the lowest points of low grade, and you plot an average height, that is what's contributing to this being, you know, just, just, just really slightly above your ordinance. It's not the fact that this particular element, the gable end, is particularly high, it's when you travel all the way around that footprint, and you can imagine being on a, being on a hill and traveling from low points to high points, that that's making this measure, exaggerating this measurement, because it's really the unique situation of the topography, which, and the way in which it's calculated within your ordinance, that's, that's driving this height calculation to be a little higher.
But don't you also benefit from high spots that bring down the average?
In our particular case, it's working, I mean, theoretically, you could, you could in some instances benefit, but in our particular case, it's working, working against us. The other factor that we have here is that we're kind of, in some instances, describing this as the whole building is this, is this massively high building, but what we are trying to achieve is really the gable end, you know, the highest, you know, triangular portion of the roof in the area, I mean, or in volume, it's a very de minimis portion of the, of the building, and that's based upon the width and of trying to achieve proportions that are customary with the architecture that exists on the campus, buildings like President's Hall, that you have an expectation visually that, that gable end has a proportion to it, and that is, that is pleasant and pleasing, and for the, for the width that we're dealing with, it's causing a small triangular portion of it to be a bit higher. The other thing that happens is, it doesn't extend all the way across from end to end. In older buildings, there's, there's a parapet condition, so there's a, there's about a one foot six wide condition of masonry that extends a little bit above the roof. It's that, that traditional architectural feature, which I think is an embellishment to the architecture of the campus and the community that is driving this discussion and this request.
So you say it's like a plane that exceeds it?
It literally is like, like a plane, a one and a half foot wide plane of decorative masonry.
Okay. While we have the architect here, any questions from the board, other questions regarding this? Eli?
Mr. Shatken, the, when you took the average around the building, I presume that at the loading dock, which is near the low side, that the total height from the grade at the loading dock to the roof on that side of the building is higher than the average, and that the grade on the opposite side of the building is lower than the average?
Well, the loading dock was one, the loading dock is driven, is a feature that you go below a ground plane, or you go below the plaza, and therefore, what we have is, we basically have a loading dock which is more or less at, at grade, and we're, we're going down into the loading dock in order to conceal that condition, and that is one of the measurements which is actually coming into the average to work, to work against, to work against us.
So is that, is that, is that a yes to my question, that the height of the building on the side, if you were to measure the height from the grade of the loading dock to the roof, it would be greater than the average, and then on the other side of the building, it would be less than the average?
Considerably less in the condition where you're actually right against the higher condition, yes, the answer to your question is, is yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can you point on one of the plans up there, where this turn gable is and where it's going to be visible from? You might have covered it before, but since we're talking about it tonight...
Counsel, could you just step back a, counsel? Just step back a little bit, so that...
Okay. The condition that I'm describing is right at the very, very center of the building. So obliquely, it would be visible from, from South Orange Avenue, but it is really somewhat internal to the, to the campus.
So it's set back from the portion of the building in the loading area directly facing South Orange Avenue?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And did we discuss, most of the roof is compliant or not?
That's, that's the, the majority of, the vast majority of this roof is, is compliant.
Okay.
And the vast majority of this roof is, you know, gable roofs, which start materially lower and then rise up to these conditions which reflect, you know, the architecture that is, you know, customary of a build, of a traditional building of this type.
Okay.
So the, the volume is, is much lower than what would be conveyed by this one condition.
Thank you. Board, anything else? Well, now that we've brought this, another witness up, if anybody from the public would like to address the architect? I know he has a name, but...
Willie Krima, in my ignorance, there was something called District A, or there was, what, what was the significance of, you made a point that you had to move these buildings closer together so that you could go further away from a, didn't get that right.
Okay.
I don't know what, what that means.
Yeah, sure. So the, there's a, a special district, it's not, it's not delineated on this plan, it's delineated on the campus master plan, but it's essentially a special district that was created at, at this edge, this sort of southerly edge of campus, and it's a more restrictive zone intentionally to reduce university impacts on the neighbors that are right here and right up against the university.
Can you be more specific? What, what impact? What do you mean by impact? Is it height of buildings?
Well, there's a series of restrictions that are more restrictive than the, the other portions of the university, university zone, things like the, the permitted height. So the, the building is actually lower, the port, there's a small portion of the proposed building that actually extends into Special District A, so that building height was set at the maximum allowed within Special District A.
What is that? What's the height in Special District A?
Thirty-five...
Thirty-two feet?
Thirty-two feet, sorry. Just going from memory.
And that-
And, and the, the proposed roof height in that district is compliant. So what I was referring to when I spoke before was the fact that the existing building, which is Duffy Hall, it, where its wall is currently, the proposed building wall will actually be, the university has, has elected to pull that wall back 28, you know, plus or minus 28 feet from where the existing Duffy Hall wall is, in, in an effort to just, you know, pull that building back.
And how high is that wall that gets pulled back, the new one?
It, it's, it's, it's under the 32 feet, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
John Gay, again, this one's for the architect. The, the fire compliance that you talked about with the, relating to the variance, does the fact that it's compliant have anything to do with the service road? In other words, the fact that, that's a skinnier spot there, since you've got access from that service road, does that in any way, shape, or form-
These are two very different precincts of the campus, very unrelated to one another. This, the condition that we're referring to with this variance is completely on the opposite side of the, of the building.
Okay, so it's got, the service road has nothing to do with the fire access to, to this area?
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm actually asking a question from something that was brought up way before, but since, there, there was, you, let me just rephrase. You, you talked before about, there were, there was a question about the access for fire.
Yes.
For the part of the, not, not the height variance, but the proximity to the two buildings.
Yes.
And you said that it's compliant.
That's correct.
My question is, is the, it's compliance based in any way on the fact that there is a service road now that would allow access to the building?
The two conditions are unrelated to one another.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
With, with those witnesses, the university rests its case here.
Okay. Maybe we could just, well, I think one thing that was, is worth just answering is with your acoustic consultant, if he could just address the question of whether or not, raised by your landscape consultant, if there was a hard wall of some sort that was to be an acoustic barrier, would that would have an adverse effect on actually the public side or the street side? Would it bounce, would it bounce sound-
I think that was raised by Mr. Garbini, but we'll still answer it.
Right.
Joe Haresco, Centec, the, the answer is if there were a, a hard wall, it would reflect sound back into the community.
And in your opinion, it would be more adverse than beneficial? In other words, it wouldn't-
Yes, because the number of, of instances of, of vehicles on the service road is minor compared to the number of vehicles on the, on the South Orange Avenue.
So it would serve to echo the street noise in a way that would be not beneficial?
Yes, yes, and you have a lot more cars that would be louder than before.
Okay, makes sense. Eli?
If the hards, if the hard surface were facing the service drive, and you bermed up to it from the side facing South Orange Avenue, what would the effect, what effect would that have?
So we're talking about a, a ground cover, dirt, grass-
Facing South Orange Avenue.
Facing South Orange Avenue. It would be less reflective. I'd have to do, you know, a more thorough study to give you an exact number, but any surface that's hard, or solid, should I say, is going to reflect sound. The harder it is, acoustically speaking, the more sound it reflects. So even though there's ground that would have grass cover or dirt, it's still going to be compact and reflect some sound, so-
I guess, let me make myself more clear. What if you bermed up from the South Orange Avenue side?
Right.
Some distance to three or four feet high, by the time you got to the edge of the service drive, and then had a wall, so that you could keep the berm further away from the trees that everyone, I think, agrees should be preserved?
Right, so in that case, it would be less reflecting than just a, a straight wall?
But because it would cut off, to the extent that it cut off line of sight between the vehicles and the street, it would reduce the sound as-
From the service drive to the other side of South Orange as well? Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions from the board?
I think so. Board? I think that's all.
Okay, so we're, our, our case is finished, I think.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, you, anybody in the audience can come up to express their opinion about this project, it would be on the record.
Just, just so I know, will you all be speaking, or just he's be speaking for you? Are you all coming up?
I think everybody's gonna say a little something. We'll try to be brief.
Mr. Gay, you have to be sworn in for this portion of the-
I'm sorry?
You have to be sworn in for this portion.
Oh, I apologize.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
The first thing I'd ask is that there is a petition that I'd like to mark as an exhibit, that has 77 signatures on it. If we could make this part of the record, I'd appreciate it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, petitions are not evidential. The only evidence is when somebody comes and testifies under oath before this board, like the university witnesses have.
Counsel's correcting.
So, so petitions just cannot be accepted by a land use board?
You can mark it, but it should not, would you like my advice?
Yes.
Without live testimony, without those people being here, you shouldn't, you shouldn't accept a petition, it's not evidential.
Okay, I tried. Yeah, this one's a little easier to talk into. Thanks. We've, I've been to, I don't know, every one of these meetings, and we've expressed our concerns throughout. I, I, I think the board is pretty well aware of what our position is on this, that the variance should be denied. This is a radical transformation of the neighborhood. The service road, and I understand that the service road itself does not require a variance, but it is part of the plan overall, and the, the fact that they need the variance, I believe, should allow this board the power, the opportunity to make sure that things are done properly with respect to the service road and other things related to this. I know that there's been some discussions about the berm and other things like that, and, and what the sightlines are going to be with respect to the loading dock and, and other things and the noise. I can tell you from somebody who's gonna be directly across from this every single day, when I walk out, leave my house, I'm gonna see, based on what everybody's testified to, I'm gonna see the loading dock area, it's gonna be an open door, I'm gonna have truck noise every single day, and it's, it's just not right. I understand that the, they've asked for variances, in my opinion, I don't think they've met the criteria for the variance, I don't think the benefit of the deviation, particularly for, for either one of these things, substantially outweighs the benefit. There is at least some case law, as I understand it, that suggests that a variance should not be granted where the purposes are only to benefit the person who's, who's moving for the variance, and that's what we have here, under the C2. Seton Hall is asking for a variance for their own purposes, it's not to benefit the, the community, it's to benefit them personally, and, and, and that's it. And so that they can build a huge center that they think is gonna attract more students to them, and they're gonna earn more money. That's not the purpose of C2 variance. And again, the, the radical transformation with this, they can put trees, they can do other things, but the fact of the matter is, what used to be a green space is now going to be an industrial-style service road with a tractor-trailer turnaround, and it's going to be visible from South Orange, and it's, obviously, I'm impacted because I live right across the street, but I'm not the only one. Every person who drives by there, rides by there, does anything relating to that, is gonna be impacted. People in the neighborhood on Warren Court are gonna be impacted. I can tell you that, and perhaps somebody else is gonna speak about this, but I know that there was somebody who wanted to, was ready to purchase a house on Warren Court, and decided not to because of this plan. There was real impact to the people in the community of this, and I think the court, I mean, the, the board, I know you're gonna take that into account, but it's important. I know Seton Hall has their interests, Seton Hall has their rights, but we do too. And I know, I'm just asking you to keep that in mind, put yourself in the position of us, as well as Seton Hall, when you consider what to do here. This is something we're gonna wake up to every single day, this is something that could impact negatively my ability to sell my house if I wanted to leave, and, you know, it's a real problem for the people of the neighborhood. I guess that's all I have to say. Thanks, you.
I have prepared a written statement that I would like to read, if that's admissible as an exhibit.
You can read if you like, but you have to be sworn in first.
Sure.
Okay.
Can I give you copies of that? I have copies of the board.
It's gonna go on the public record, it's videotaped, and we don't need it.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
You have an important job ahead of you, to decide whether the variances requested by Seton Hall for the new university center project can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Seton Hall had to, to prove that the public benefit of the entire project outweighs any impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance, or any detriment to the neighborhood. In doing so, I asked you to consider the impact of the project on the surrounding neighborhood. First, I want to establish short-term impacts. Construction period will add to the noise, airborne dust, and traffic to the area. Homeowners will have to deal with these construction-related issues for three long years. The area is already noise, noise stressed, based on studies provided by Seton Hall, and enduring much higher levels of noise for three long years is a huge burden. We believe that construction-related noise, traffic, and airborne dust will depress property values in the area. Temporary structures to replace the dining facilities and auxiliary services will be placed right along South Orange Avenue, and will be an eyesore. Delivery trucks for the temporary dining facilities will use the proposed service road, thus adding to the construction-related noise and traffic. Now, let me talk, address the long-term effects. The proposed service road will be an eyesore in the area. I'm not convinced that the trees will block views of the service road in all seasons. Now, this is not in my statement, but yeah, if you have a burn of some sort that blocks the noise, that would, I think, would be some interesting solution for this problem. Trash will be removed daily from this location, right from the installation of the temporary dining facility. This impact, as well as the following, will bring down the property values in the area. First, the proposed service road in university center will also increase the amount of paved area, which may result in excessive runoff despite the surances of the engineered training system. Most homes in the areas surrounding the new projects are hilled down from the project. The proposed service road will also impact environment in the area. There will be increased noise due to traffic in the area that is already noise stressed, according to New Jersey Department of NJDP standards. Proposals to grow trees in the area to buffer the service road will not really address the noise issue. As Seton Hall University has not given us a definite number of vehicles, well, it's now taken care of, so the number was 15. Increased traffic in an area that is already handling a large amount of traffic will add to pollution. Possibility of buses and trucks idling in the large truck turning circle. Again, an assurance by the university that this will not occur is not enough to deter this use lacking enforcement. Old gross trees will be removed from the site, and any new trees will need many years to grow to their mature size. On the flip side, we do not see any inherent benefits of the project for the neighborhood. The new buildings, building will replace a building that is understated and architecturally appealing. The building proposed to be replaced is not an eyesore, and therefore, the new building is not really a net plus for the area. Instead, I would like to point out a few admissions by Seton Hall Senior Management and Express Businesses. The vice president testified that the university did not want the loading dock and service road facing university uses. This shows that the university has a negative attitude towards loading docks and service roads, that do not have any issues with such uses facing the neighbors. The vice president, when questioned by community member about whether they had considered effect on neighboring property values, responded that they are not concerned about property values of the neighbors. As property values captured the main asset of most Americans, we believe that the university did not really consider neighborhood benefits in the planning of the project. In fact, and this is towards what John Gay mentioned, one of our friends looked at the house in the neighborhood and decided against purchasing it. Finally, the engineering expert witnessed agreed that the proposed service road was located in what would be considered Seton Hall's front yard. I asked you to consider how the board would look on me, adding a loading dock in my front yard, even if it were allowed by code. In my opinion, this project definitely, definitely does not meet the threshold of proof required to outweigh any detriment to the neighborhood. If you still consider the project is worthwhile for granting the requested variances, I asked you to require at least one of the following changes to the plan. In particular, the enforcement issue of any agreement would be crucial, given that Seton Hall has shown that many of its decisions are ad hoc, and do not consider any impact on the community. The showcase example is how Seton Hall handled the parking situation for the fall semester. So, I would like you to consider, change or move the location of the new buildings so that the service road and loading dock are located on the interior of Seton Hall campus. Surely, they could use buffer like the ones they proposed along their service road plan to shield it from view. Moving the building forward towards South Orange Avenue will remove the need for at least one of the requested variances, and provide enough space in the rear to accommodate the service road and truck turning circle. If service road is left at proposed location, it must be sunk below grade and shielded with a landscape berm so that the road and traffic on it is not visible from the neighboring area. I hope you consider the neighbors that live around Seton Hall, that will have to live with noise for the next three years, that will have to live with a service road that basically makes the whole thing close to the New Jersey Turnpike, given also the, the width of South Orange Avenue, and that you really balance the needs of Seton Hall. I appreciate they have the needs, I myself- really balance the needs of Seton Hall. I appreciate they have the needs. I myself, faculty at Rutgers, I know what universities look like, what students' needs are. But this is a balancing act, and I think, as it is written right now, it's not fair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
John Teeford, 104 South Kingman Road.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes, Mr. Teeford. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
It's been a real long walk for all of us to get to this point where I can give comment and give my opinion. And first of all, genuinely, I do want to thank Seton Hall, because during this whole process, it's very clear that you've put a tremendous amount of effort into listening to the community and doing your best to making changes that address the concerns of the community. I personally think the design is attractive and is fitting with campus. I also personally feel that it's a bad fit for the Village of South Orange. I made that model because one of my concerns is the scale of this project. I really do feel that it's simply far too large for the village. I understand that the university wants to grow, but the village is fairly small, and with the number of students that are already enrolled, things like the recent parking issue illustrate the fact that if the university gets even bigger, it's going to put more pressure on the rest of South Orange. Washington DC long ago decided that they would put a cap on all their buildings. I think in Washington DC, the limit's 40 feet. And when I visited, maybe 15 years ago, our tour guide very clearly impressed on us that that was deliberate, and it was done to maintain the human scale of a very powerful place. South Orange Village has a scale. It's residential, it's small, and I hope in some small way the model that I made illustrates that the size of this project is much, much larger than anything else that currently exists. Beyond that, I would only repeat what Uli and John have already said. So, since we're already coming up on quarter past 10, I'll close my comments. So, thank you all very much for your patience and for the hard work that's gone into this.
Thank you. Make sure you take this home. Kids want to keep the house, I'm sure. Okay. Anybody else from the public? Okay, so we're going to close the testimony part of this application, and the board will deliberate. Board, do you have anything you'd like to discuss?
Sure.
I would point out a few things to you three guys. The planning board has a fairly narrow and precise purpose that is definitely informed by larger issues. So, when we look at the variances before us, we keep in mind the particular aspects of those variants, not necessarily whether or not it should disqualify the whole project. So, we have to look at how those variances in and of themselves are either, that their advantages outweigh the detriment, not whether the project does in general. So, I just want you to understand that. So, when we look at these variances, we have to look at the two particular variances in their very specific and narrow issues. Now, we can look at the project as a whole and judge it whatever way we want and ask for things because of it, but those variances themselves, we don't really look at whether the project is detrimental or purposeful. Is that a fair assessment, Susan, in terms of the variants we're looking at, or can we apply it in a more general sense?
No, I think that, I think that gen-- I'm sorry. I think that generally, you're correct. It's the variance, the deviations that, and how they impact the, because it is a permitted use, obviously.
Right. That's the other thing. I mean, from my point of view on the board, I think it is a very large building. I definitely, I think your model may be not terribly accurate per se, but I know from, I'm an architect, and I know from reading the plans and looking at this, it's a very large building. Having said that, if the variances didn't exist, and as we tried to make clear that those square feet could be reapplied somewhere else, and those, a few feet from that gable could be taken down, they could still put a very large building in place there, the exact same building in place without those variances. So, we have to see if those variances in and of themselves disqualify the building. And the second thing is, though, I think we're all very, very aware of the neighborhood in terms of this service road, and I know that the board is thinking about that, and I'm sure you'll hear from them in terms of that service road. The other thing that I would keep in mind, though, is that construction, if this was a non-variance project, and that service road is the only thing we're talking about, there would still be construction traffic there, whether Seton Hall, whether you guys like the building or not, or whether we like the building or not. So, it's kind of a reality of that situation. So, hopefully as a board, we are going to evaluate the application in all, in its entirety, at the same time we narrow our focus down and look at the issues before us. I just wanted to preface our deliberations with those thoughts. Michael, do you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, there were two exhibits that were presented tonight, basically redone for the first time, and I don't know if our, either our town engineer, who was not here this evening, or our planning board consultants have had a chance to really look at that and see if there is another way of beefing it up from a sound standpoint and so forth. Very difficult to see the differences between the landscape plan that they put up and the plan that I had of July '02. So, I think we need to hear, or we should hear, from our consultants on both those plans, which haven't really been submitted yet, other than tonight. I mean, they haven't been submitted to the board to look at in advance, or for our consultants to look at in advance.
You're talking about the lighting and the revised landscape?
Well, the lighting, the revised landscaping. And also, I'd like to hear some of our planners' opinions on the variances requested.
I would too.
If I might say one thing, Mr. Chairman, the differences on the landscaping plan were testified to, and they were minor. Basically, the landscaping plan has the road that has been narrowed, and it's reflective of that. I think that's the only change in the landscaping plan.
It sounds like the chairs were, as a result of what we and the residents have brought up at current meetings, and so.
No, I understand that, but again, it wasn't submitted. It was presented tonight. It was not submitted in advance for anybody to look at or to scrutinize.
Chairman, I would think we would need a lighting plan as part of this resolution.
There was a lighting plan submitted originally. This lighting plan has, is amended to show reduced lighting on the service road. So, there was a lighting plan. When the service road got finalized, and the request for a low level of lighting was made, this plan was prepared to show the low level of lighting. You know, both of these plans are reactive to concerns of the board and concerns of the residents. If I might just say one other thing, Mr. Chairman, I didn't sum up, and I don't think I really need to, but this is an as-of-right application, except for the two variances. The university's own governs the FAR, the building coverage, all aspects of this site. You know, the university is very scrupulous about using its available FAR and building coverage, because, you know, there is no more unless the zone has changed, but that we don't anticipate that happening. But, so, you know, it's a big building, but it's a building within that what's allowable in the zone. And these variances are truthfully de minimis variances. I mean, really, the 80 feet is at a very limited portion of the building, and the 76 feet is basically because of the architectural treatment of that particular area of the building. The existing, is an existing condition of 37 feet from the existing buildings, and this is becoming 27, only because the building is being moved a little bit away from the more limited special district zone. So, I mean, I think if you look at this plan discreetly, these variances are supported extensively well. And the rest of it is as-of-right.
I think we are aware of that, counsel. You know, I, for one, I tend to concur with that. I don't think the variances are, they seem to me to be the tail that's kind of wagging the dog. It's, they're very minimal. It's a very large building, as-of-right. They could take the square feet away from the proximity to the adjacent building and put it somewhere else. So, I think the building design is well done. It's a big building. It's a new, it's a new statement for Seton Hall. They pulled it back from the South Orange Avenue as much as they could. So, I tend to be somewhat supportive of granting the variance. The service road still, for me, is not a completely resolved issue. I think, I just, I don't, in my mind, see yet enough in terms of the topography and everything. I know you've tried to screen it, and I also think there's going to be not very much traffic. I don't think it's going to be the New Jersey. They've said that there's a maximum of so many trucks a day, and this is public testimony, this is, they're under oath. I think we have to take it as being somewhat of a factual statement. As I said, the construction is going to happen, whether they put a 400-foot building up, or a 300-foot building, or 250-foot building. There's a lot of construction. It'll still take three years. That's just an unhappy circumstance of the situation. So, from my point of view as the chairman, I think the variances are supportable, because I don't think they're substantive. The service road, and your concern about the truck traffic and looking at a loading dock, they've tried to respond with screening. They said pretty much they couldn't burn it up, but I don't know if there's something else that we could try and do. I think it's a very critical issue. I think it's important. I think the community benefits from it. If there's an emergency need, they've solved some problems in it. So, I'm not sure, from my point of view, what more we could ask for on the service road. I don't think there's anything, from my point of view, that we can disqualify the building because of these variances. The variances seem supportable. I don't know what any other board feels.
I would echo very similar sentiments, and, you know, I think that we've gone through quite a number of concerns so far, and I would definitely thank the residents for bringing some of these things up, and also Seton Hall for, I think, being very accommodating about trying to find ways to try and do the best they can within the framework of what they want to do for this building, to accommodate some of the concerns that people have had. But as far as weighing in on the two variances, you know, I feel comfortable to support moving forward with both of those tonight.
You know, having said that, I think we can qualify whatever findings we come to. I think it's very important operationally that they're committed to certain hours and reduce lighting at certain hours, and absolutely in terms of deliveries. I mean, as you said, the future is not always enforceable, but we can make that part of our resolution. And I don't know if any of the board had any other ideas of how to favorably screen the service road, or whether, I mean, besides topography, we thought through, Eli?
With respect to the service road, I'm troubled by two. One aspect, the lighting, recognizing that the university has a right to, and it's appropriate to illuminate the driveway. If there are way to illuminate it with something lower to the ground so that it doesn't call attention to its presence at night, that there's this thing there between the South Orange Avenue and the campus, so.
I mean, we're encouraged by the foot candle readings. I mean, there's more foot candles on South Orange Avenue at night than there will be on the service road, but, you know, for me, the difference in colors, I mean, to me, that's something, you know, you're going to always see this lit road and everything.
Well, I was thinking if they used really low lighting, like bollards or something, there'd be a lot more of them, but it wouldn't be this sense that there's something there at night.
There are cutoff lights.
And as far as the landscaping, I appreciate all the planting they're proposing, but I think there ought to be a way to shape the ground a little bit and take advantage of the fact that there's already a little bit of hill there to screen it further, because it, otherwise, it makes it look like the campus is turning its back on the street, and I think that's a mistake.
Anybody else? Michael?
Well, I'm still waiting. I just wanted to hear if our planners had any suggestions. I'm not opposed to the variances, because I also agree that, as a right, they can construct. And construction's going to exist for three years, whether it's in this form or another form, it's going to be there. So, I'm not opposed to that, and I lean towards supporting the variances, but I'm still also troubled with the sound and the service road and the landscaping, because I think there's maybe a little bit more that can be done. I'm not the pro on that. That's why I'm looking at our professionals, you know, ignoring, you know, the construction controls and so forth, because we do have ordinances that would control that.
I guess the first question that you asked was dealing with the variances, and I would tend to agree with what has been set up to now, that I do agree that it would be a C2, both variances would be C2 variances, that the use is as-of-right, that there are other standards in the university's own that were placed in those to control, I guess would be the proper term, development. The intent of many of the, or several of the standards was to permit the university to expand reasonably, but to do it within the, most of the internal part of the campus, rather than on the edges. I don't believe that the two variances that they're requesting really substantially undermines the intent of the university's own and what the intent of a number of those standards are. The FAR really is the density control, I think, as stated before. The height, at least, is more related to the architectural features and the manner in which it's placed on the site. The distance between the buildings, I guess, it could be expanded out, but the intent is to try to keep the building away from South Orange Avenue. I guess the one aspect, and this has been stated too, is if there is ways of mitigating the service road, one I think is a good idea in terms of creating lower-scale lighting, more in terms of bollards, rather than the 12-foot, even though 12-feet height is not significant, and there are significant height, or there are significant lighting structures along South Orange Avenue. It certainly would mitigate that. Sometimes by landscaping too much, you're almost bringing, you're bringing attention to the matter. I think that there may be an opportunity to do a bit more grading, using grade as the, as a way of mitigating, but I'm not necessarily of the opinion that landscaping or walls would be, or more landscaping and walls would necessarily mitigate the service driveway.
The only, the only other thing I want to add is that you don't, the grading has to be respective of the mature trees that exist along there. They're already taking out some of the mature trees, simply to get the roadway in there. By grading more, you don't want to have a greater impact, because those trees are substantial, and it's going to take many years for them to grow back. So, you want to work within that, and the more of those mature trees, you cannot add fill on top of, I mean, it just won't happen. The other thing with the lights, and some of this is a difference of opinion between a planning aspect and an engineering aspect, I understand the point of a bollard. I understand the point of a bollard, which may be fine along the roadway itself because you're only trying to illuminate an 18-to-24-foot width. But another way of dealing with it, and the 12-foot high light is fairly low, it's about as low as you can go, is you have that large circular area and I don't care how many bollards you're going to put in there, you're not going to be able to illuminate it properly. What you can also do is, and the university, I wasn't sure whether they really definitively stated what they were going to do, is to control which lights are on. You don't need to have all of the lights in that area on, you know, after some period of time, 8 o'clock, 10 o'clock, whatever that may be. If you keep those lights closest to the three buildings, to the new university center, to Fahy Hall and Cabrini, those lights are going to blend into the buildings in the background and even though they're on and you're standing on the sidewalk, you can see that fixture, but it's going to blend into the background. So, you can control it in that manner as well of turning some of those lights off. I don't know which ones, but, you know.
Well, they testified. I mean, there are two different testimonies. One's we're going to leave them on until a certain hour and the other is it was going to be a photoelectric cell. So, I don't think they've decided on what the photometrics would be of the lighting. I lean more to your way rather than bollards because I can see a lot of problems with bollard lighting, but, but again, that hasn't been decided by the university on how they're going to control the lighting and so, and we don't know that.
Well, we can ask that they submit it eventually and make it part of the final resolution. Can we? Yeah. Dan?
So, I first want to say that I think it is obviously valuable that we have Seton Hall University in the community. So, there was some question about that and I just want that clear. I'm less inclined to vote for the variances because I'm not an architect. I don't have very much aesthetic taste in whether it's a little bit higher or lower, but I'll leave that to the wisdom of the majority. But I was struck by one comment, I want to go back to the road. I was struck by the comment, "How much will you be able to see?" And I don't remember which of you gentlemen said it, but it was, you said, "Well, for the first 10 years, you'll be able to see, there'll be a lot." So, through the trees. So, the question I have is, can you not put in more mature trees so that it's five years and not 10 years, or two years and not 10 years? I mean, if we're looking for solutions and I realize that it's more expensive to bring in a bigger tree and I'm not, you know, my plants don't grow very well anyway, so I don't know if you can't bring in a big enough tree, but when I'm listening to the testimony, that's one of the few things that strikes me as some possibility of providing some acknowledgement, as you have in other cases, of the needs of the community and something with the noise and the visibility. That's the only glimmer that I heard in all of the testimony that might be thought through.
Dan, I agree with you. That was one of the reasons I was hoping our planners would get a look at the final plan and make their comments. I mean, for argument, they've got a two-inch caliper or a three-inch caliper on the Texas redbud bud. It's a small tree. It's going to take forever for it to grow or a good long time. But I was hoping, I'm not a landscape expert and I was just hoping our planners can give us some guidance along with that and work with the university to solve that issue. Again, there's got to be some give and take. I mean, I certainly think the presentation made by Seton Hall was an excellent one, but I also, you know, I hear, you know, from residents and as we all do, and there is a concern, so how do you balance some of that concern? In this particular case, I think if you put in some, whatever, I leave that to.
Counsel?
I think the testimony was that from where you're standing, you know, in the first year that this vegetation goes in, you may see something. I mean, I don't think it was 10 years that you'll, am I correct, Mr. Witness?
As I believe I tried to answer that question, I said it depends on where you stand and at what height, what your vantage point is. There may be some views depending on where you're standing. It is not a continuous hedge of one tree species of a certain height. We intentionally added a lot of variety as Susan had mentioned, sometimes if it's a consistent and heavy, heavy, heavy landscape treatment, it actually draws more attention to it than less. I think we're working with a context that has a lot of existing mature trees, trying to preserve the lawn area between the fence and the buffer plantings. And, you know, in terms of the trees, again, you know, we're putting in just the evergreens alone, 154 evergreen trees, six to seven feet tall. No, the redbuds are smaller, two and a half inches in caliper. But when you've got six to seven-foot evergreens that are already above the elevation of the sidewalk and eight-to-10-foot evergreens, it's a very significant amount of planting and a good size for installation.
I guess the point is, you know, we could, we could second-guess the design and try to, try to, you know, put our own personalities into it and our own thinking about things, but the university's hired a bunch of good experts. They've come in here with a plan that's been well thought out, that they believe in, that has tried to address these concerns. And I think at some point in time, you know, a board should accept the expert testimony that's given to it when it's, when it has a basis in effort and fact.
I agree with you. I think what we're trying to do here is drill down in that expert testimony, make sure it's something that we feel we can stand behind. Not that we're doubting it, we're just evaluating it.
We, Eric and I were speaking and there may be some opportunity in terms of looking at some grading. It's not going to be significant, but there may be some opportunities where the grading could be modified a bit to increase the screening that would be provided. You know, the lawn is one of the characteristics of that area and that's when I stated the landscaping, over landscaping can be maybe, you can go overboard with that. Part of it is that one of the characteristics is the lawn. So, if there's a way of sensitively dealing with that as well and not creating too much of landscaping where we may be able to get a little bit more lawn in there, I'm sure that the university doesn't necessarily want to spend extra money on over landscaping as well. So, we may be able to do a bit in that area.
Well, you know, I mean, I think screening the road is important, but I mean, you know, the trucks are intermittent and when they're not there, it's nothing but air. But I mean, for me, screening the loading dock is, I feel very sympathetic to a resident who walks out their front door and looks at a loading dock or truck loading. I know it's somewhat down in the curve and everything, but that for me is a critical goal. So, I mean, I think as a board, we're all, we, I think there's a fairly good consensus. I'm not sure what to do. I think generally we feel that the variances are grantable and that there's maybe some work to do still to satisfy us on the road. I don't know at this point what we should do about it.
The one other thing, Mr. Chairman, in looking at it is focusing on that area of the loading dock where, yeah, they've moved it back, the road from South Orange Avenue to degree, but the circle is still there and the view lines is especially, you know, if we maybe take out some of the extensiveness of the landscaping as you move down towards Cabrini and create some gaps, is to take, take that out and insert, grade that area and also most of the evergreen trees, and those are the ones that are going to provide the year-round buffering of that area, is instead of having them all be six to seven feet, is to insert in that area of the circle and the loading area, some larger eight-to-10-foot evergreens. Not all of them, but again, that provides a little bit of a variation. You're putting in some plants that are a little bit bigger, some that are a little smaller. It breaks up the visual perspective of that area and creates a little bit more immediate screening, but also keeps that differentiation of the plant material in there.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation that we really not vote on this tonight and give our, we have two experts there, our planners, a chance to meet with and work out some of the issues, the screening of the loading dock that you've mentioned, some of the berming or non-berming, and come back literally, have our experts come back because they've been here through all the testimony and our attorney, and come back with a recommendation to the board on the basis of approval, you know, whether it's got in any enforcement language or what have you, but to try and sit here tonight and craft the motion, I think would be quite.
Two points, Mr. Chairman. You know, we did have this meeting. We had it at the university back in the end of May after the first hearing. It was to discuss these very points. That's what led to these plans that were presented in July. You know, a condition that the experts meet and try to improve the landscaping plan to their best professional judgment, that's a perfect condition. We, you know, we, but to hold this application up for another meeting for the experts to meet on something they've met with already that is indefinite and is difficult for them as for us, I think that's, that's not the sensible thing to do.
Mm-hmm. Board? I mean, it's, I hear you on that. I mean, on the other hand, it's a hard thing to write a resolution, I'm not sure how to write the resolution and allow for that kind of work to go on and make sure that the board is ultimately satisfied with it.
I mean, it's commonly done.
But if you're, but, I'm sorry.
It's commonly done.
But if one of our board members suggested that it's going to be worked out with professionals anyway, and so perhaps that is, you know, that's adequate to leave that as a condition of the resolution that until you two are satisfied with any additional screening or provisions made or lighting adjustments, I think you know our concerns. I mean, perhaps that that is.
Well, it's more than that. I mean, this hearing was adjourned for quite some time and I believe our counsel, who was not here tonight, has got also notes on some of the comments and I'll be darned, I don't remember them all.
And we have the sixth coming up. You know, we're meeting again on January 6th and so, I mean, I also think that, I mean, there was a six-month hiatus. It took us a while. I mean, we didn't even ask the architect to come back and represent and, you know, things get a little stale and there were some testimonies, he had a cross-section through the drive. We didn't see that again. I mean, I think that there, in all fairness, I think that two or three week pause or something until we really have, I think it's fair to say that this particular issue is very, very sensitive to the board and the community and that I would want to make sure that, given, now that we've tipped our hand to pretty much how we're thinking about the project, that we don't leave any stone unturned just to make sure that our professionals are satisfied. We've tried to respond to the request of the community as well. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that it sort of leaves it a little vague, but I'm also inclined to think that it would be fair to defer until the, I know it's a little difficult time to work during that time, but we would have our counsel back and we would make sure everything's in a row and that we'd be able to hear you again on the 6th.
Yeah. I personally would like to vote on this tonight. I think we've spent enough time talking about it. I think we've seen all the evidence. There's no objections to any of the variances that I've heard from anybody tonight, I don't think, and I don't think anyone can make an objection. So, the one thing that remains, that seems to be remaining is some questions about screening on the road, which our professionals, we're all confident are perfectly capable of taking care of. So, why can't we just pass a resolution like what you said, Mr. Chairman, and allow the professionals to work with you guys, which sounds agreeable to you, to satisfy our professionals?
Well, let's say vote on a resolution.
Right.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah. I'd like to do that tonight.
Because we have to, we haven't necessarily, I don't know everybody's opinion, so we can vote on a resolution. If that's consensus of the board that it's probably better to vote, to allow professionals to work out some of the details regarding this, put any other, you don't have to vote yes.
What?
You don't have to vote yes.
Yeah.
And if there are any other issues that we want to, if there are operational issues in terms of lighting that we want to make sure that are addressed in this professional review, I think, and if my planner thinks that that's reasonable to do and my counsel, I would go and do it.
Does that mean, assuming the resolution passes, that this board won't hear the results of the consultation?
Why would that?
I'm just asking.
But we could hear the results in the next meeting, right?
I think therefore saying whatever the results of that meeting.
But we're pretty much allowing them to be made with. I just want to be clear. I want to understand the implications, that whatever the results of the professional consultation will be the results that the board will have prior to the fact of hearing the results agreed to. Is that the substance of the resolution?
Well, wasn't this kind of what we did with Third and Valley, where in the sense where we had some concerns about, I think it was color and some of the landscape and we let it up to our engineer and our planners to say, you know, as long as these things are met and everyone, professionals agree, wasn't that kind of the same, what we're asking here?
No, Third and Valley didn't take as long as this is. There wasn't a long hiatus between it. There was a lot of conversations on this.
But relying on our professionals.
That our attorney is not here, that he has the notes of.
And I think at Third and Valley, there was also not such a public concern. If my memory is right, and it may not be at my age, I don't remember that there were so many members of the public who had such concerns.
Dan, but you had a question that counsel could answer. In other words, you asked if, once we turn it over to professionals, whether we then hear it again or whether we.
I think, I think the way you would, a motion would be crafted, it would be to approve the application, subject to further review on the lighting perhaps and the grading by the professionals. They would meet. If, if the consensus was that you approved of the plan, especially since you didn't have two elements to plan before you tonight, you have to have time to review them, you could either sign off of them, say they're fine, and that's the way the plan would go in, and then there would not be any further presentation. If as a result of meetings, things change, they would have to come back and present a new plan. A new plan would not go in without the public seeing it.
When you say things change, you mean that they accept different versions of our recommendations from our planners?
Yeah. If the planners make a recommendation, you change the grading here six feet, they would have to draw up that plan and come back to you and present that plan.
I think the typical, the typical condition of this type of thing is that the board would approve the resolution, subject to the review of the landscape and lighting plans by the board's professionals. And if there was disagreement, if the applicant did not accept their recommendation, then it would come back to the board.
Well, but if the recommendation of the planner was significantly different, you would have to put it in a plan and I think.
Ultimately, the plans do get submitted for final submission and signature, as all site plans do. They get signed off on by the board professionals and by, ultimately by the chairman.
We'd have to have an itemized change, though, what was changed.
But there's another issue. Pat is not here tonight. Pat's got all of the previous notes.
Well, I presume that Pat would be drafting the actual resolution.
But I don't know what the previous notes were. It's dragged on so long.
Mike, I would hope that Pat, I would hope that Pat fully briefed the attorney that took his place tonight and gave her all the information.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I would hope that the, I would hope that Pat had fully briefed the attorney that took her place and gave her all the information. If he didn't, shame on him, but I don't think that we should hold up because of that.
Do you want to take a straw vote as to whether the board wants to vote tonight? And then depending upon how that straw vote comes out, then someone will move to either vote or to not vote.
Yeah, let's do that.
May I ask a question before you take a vote? Because I assume that Seton Hall, if this is the way that it's going, that they're not, that they're only asking for preliminary and not final site plan approval. It's normal that preliminary would have conditions.
Right.
Final is a little.
I think you've asked for both, though.
We asked for primary.
I know what you asked for. I'm, what I'm asking is because of the discussion and the conditions that the board is talking about, normally for final, you don't have those kinds of conditions. For preliminary, it's, it's not unusual.
But just so I'm clear, what we're asking is some grading issues and plants.
Or additional screening and a lighting solution that may be more thoroughly reviewed by our planners, by our engineers.
So we're going to hold up an application for lighting, plants, and a little grading? Not major grading, a little grading, right?
And with a, with a view, with a view, particularly towards the plants and the other things, to do a maximal job of screening the loading dock to the maximum possibility. I think that's what our chairman said, and I think that's been a major issue. So there's a view of what the goal is here, which is to maximize the loading dock not being a visible part, to whatever extent that's possible. Tom, do I have that right?
Can we please take that straw poll?
So, all in favor of drafting a resolution tonight and voting on it, raise your hand.
Oh, when you say drafting a resolution...
Voting on a resolution.
No. Well, let me just say, I, the resolution will be, I think, a lengthy document that will not be drafted until your next meeting. So you, what you're really asking is, are we going to vote on the variances and the approval of the application? Yes or no?
Well, fine. So, all who would be in favor of voting tonight, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. So we should, someone should move a resolution, and someone should put some basic language in it, because we need to put some basic language in our resolution.
What would you like to vote for?
Exactly what you just said before. You said it so well.
Move to approve the application.
Yes.
Subject to?
Subject to professional review for screening, grading.
For screening the loading dock, for maximal screening in general using vegetation, and for a lighting plan that maximizes both safety and minimizes visibility.
That's acceptable.
Landscaping and grading for those subjects.
And that would include, I think the lighting would include some commitment from the university to operation hours and whatnot.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just a couple of others we have...
Yeah, move to your mic.
Sorry. We have Susan's review, last review of July 12th, that should be a condition, because we have not received any written response to that letter. Our review of July 15th should be responded to. All outside agency approvals, preparation of an engineer's estimate for the purposes of establishing inspection escrow, and all the normal legal stuff.
Can I ask a question on both of your letters that were not responded to? Were there any major points in there that we should be aware of?
I think they were covered predominantly in the testimony either in July or tonight, but...
They have to be satisfied. If they're not satisfied, they come back.
Okay, so as a person who made that motion, I'd be agreeable to all of those, all that language.
Do I need a second?
Second.
The second is who?
Mark Rosner.
Mike?
Mark.
Mark.
A Jettie Roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. Rosner.
Who is that?
Rosner.
Yes.
Mr. Lerner.
Yes.
Mr. Hutt.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Torpe.
Yes.
Reverend Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
And Mr. Goldstein.
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you, counsel.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. Hope we evaluated it as best as we could. Thank you, board. Thank you, counsel.
Tom, I have one question. Based on the ruling that came out on COA, issued by the Supreme Court, New Jersey, how does that affect us? Is anybody aware of what the ruling was that came out? And they had five months to come up with a plan or to calculate?
No, but we'll have Pat in our response.
Do you want to give that to... I'm sure Pat knows that.
Give to Jettie this end of that. Jettie, do we have anything on the agenda for the 6th?
Only if Kingman comes, if they're finished with soil preservation, and possibly a sawyer disper...
And this resolution, I assume. Okay. So we'll see you on the 6th. Happy holidays, happy New Year's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where'd you earn?